Good evening. My name is Chaka Iovin. I'll be presiding over this evening's planning board meeting, January 27, 2025. We have a few items on the agenda, the first being a joint hearing with the City Council Rules and Ordinance Committee, which Ronnie Verma will be voting on in Henry Suce's absence, and then we have two public meetings, 76 Granville Avenue and Zero State Highway, which Stephanie Stone will be voting on. First thing, we have some administrative stuff to do for those in attendance under the provisions of the open meeting law. Attendees are being informed that this meeting is being recorded by Urban Media Arts and will be livestreamed on the Malden Access MATV YouTube site. I have not been notified that any other video or audio recording of this meeting will occur. The next thing we will do is start with Ronnie Verma, and we will take a roll call of the planning board.
Ronnie Raj Verma, Planning Board.
Risa Gray, Planning Board.
Todd DeJaco, Bruslase, Planning Board.
Diane Chuha, Planning Board.
Ken Antonucci, Planning Board.
Chaka Iovin, Planning Board.
Eric McCush, Planning Board.
Pat Hayes, Planning Board.
Eric Henry, Planning Board.
Stephanie Stone, Planning Board.
Thank you, and we will, I will turn it over to Councilor Winslow, who is the chairman of the ordinance committee, and they can do a roll call of the ordinance committee.
All right, so Councilor Winslow here, I'm chairman of the Rules and Orders Committee, so take the roll call here. So, first off, we have Councilor Linehan, Vice Chair.
Here.
Councilor Crowe.
Here.
Councilor O'Malley.
Here.
Councilor Taylor.
Here.
And Councilor Winslow, Chair, so we have all five members of the Rules and Orders Committee here, so.
Terrific, thank you very much. The first item on the agenda, under public hearings, is a zoning amendment, Council Paper 13-2025. Diane, would you mind reading the notice, please?
The Malden Planning Board and Malden City Council Rules and Ordinance Committee will jointly hold a public hearing in the Herbert L. Jackson Council Chamber, Malden City Hall, 215 Pleasant Street, Malden, Mass., at 7:00 p.m. on Monday, January 27, 2025, in accordance with Section 12.32.050 of Title 12 of the Code of the City of Malden (MCC) regarding a petition for zoning amendments as proposed in City Council Paper Number 13/2025 to amend Title 12 (MCC) the zoning ordinances as follows. One, Section 12.12.030 (MCC), Use Regulations Table of Use Regulations, to amend, to establish a residential use category for accessory dwelling unit and second/ subsequent accessory dwelling unit, and to establish regulations to allow accessory dwelling units in the Residence A, Residence B, Residence C, Residential Office, and Neighborhood Business zoning districts, and to prohibit accessory dwelling units in all other zoning districts. Two, Section 12.16.1010 (MCC), Table of Intensity Regulations, to amend, to establish dimensional controls for accessory dwelling units. Three, Section 12.20.010 (MCC), Table of Off-Street Parking and Loading Regulations, to amend, to establish requirements for accessory dwelling units. Four, Section 12.32.030 (MCC), Administration, Certificates, and Permits, to amend, to add new subsection D to establish requirements and regulations for site plan review for accessory dwelling units. Five, Section 12.32.030 (MCC), Administration, Certificates, and Permits, to amend, to add new subsection E to establish requirements and regulations for special permits for second/ subsequent accessory dwelling units. Six, 12.32.060 (DEFN), to amend, to establish a definition for accessory dwelling unit. Seven, Section 12.28.010, General Regulations, Nonconforming Uses, Lots, Buildings, and Structures, to amend regarding applicability of existing regulations to accessory dwelling units.
Thank you very much, Diane. I'll turn it over to Councilor Linehan, who is the sponsor of the paper, if you have any comments.
Thank you. Are you able to hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So, thank you, Mr. Chair, good evening to members of the planning board and fellow members of the City Council Ordinance Committee. I'm here before you tonight to introduce this paper as the sponsor. This is a role that I had undertook last year when I was Chair of Ordinance, and as Vice Chair now, I am seeing through and shepherding this through the council's legislative process. Important to note that I'm doing that on behalf of the mayor's working group, which actually crafted the zoning, and I want to make sure to give them proper credit for that, it's been a lot of work over the last few months. So after I provide a brief overview and before we move into the public hearing, to listen to feedback from the community, I'm going to turn it over to City Planner Michelle Romero, as well as Alex Pratt, the Director of OSPCD, to go into greater detail about the proposed zoning itself, and also the approach that the city's working group took to developing the proposal. But just to back up a little bit, for the benefit of the public and anybody watching, so that we can fully understand exactly what we're doing here, I want to just give a little bit of context on the paper itself. So in August of this past year, as I'm sure most of us in the chamber know, the governor signed into law the Affordable Homes Act, which included a provision that updated state zoning to allow accessory dwelling units, AKA ADUs, in any area of single-family zoning in the Commonwealth. Now, it doesn't matter what size the community is, what the population is, what the housing mix is, they are now allowed by right, which of course means no special permit required. ADUs are sometimes called granny flats or in-law apartments, and they can be built inside an existing home as an addition, or an attic or basement conversion, or as a detached unit, such as a freestanding structure, or in a converted garage or carriage house. So by definition, of course, they're accessory to the main dwelling on the parcel. One thing that the community, a lot of members of the community have asked me is if this is the same thing as tiny homes, and it's a little bit different because they do have to be associated with that primary dwelling, and as well in state law, they can't exceed 900 square feet, so there is a cap on the size. Now, even though this law passed in August, which was of course less than six months ago, the timeframe for municipalities like Malden to update their local zoning to allow this new use actually has a deadline of February 2nd, which of course is next week, and oddly enough, a Sunday as well. So after our hearing tonight, the council is going to vote on the zoning at our regular meeting tomorrow night, and we actually have two special meetings booked to finalize the vote later this week. It takes an act to enroll and then ordain that two-step process to become final, and at that point it would be fully adopted. So that would put us into compliance with this change to 40A of Mass. general law, and I do think that, based on talking to city staff, I do think we are going to have folks coming in pretty much right away that are ready to go and are, you know, planning to have their permits filed and get the process started. So we are right up against that deadline, but again, I want to reiterate that thanks to the hard work of so many of our City Hall staff, I think we're in good shape to get this passed by the date that it goes into effect, into effect, and folks can apply for those permits. Just a couple more quick things, I want to make sure to point out that if we don't take any action, the state zoning does essentially override our local zoning, so in my view, and in the committee's view, it behooves us to implement some locally appropriate standards for how this development does roll out in Malden, otherwise it defaults to the state zoning essentially. And there are some things that we can do and some things that we can't, which again, Ms. Romero will go over much more in depth, but just to give a couple examples, we can't restrict ADUs to, the ADU or the primary dwelling to being owner-occupied or only rented to relatives. We also can't require parking of any kind within a half-mile of transit, and the state defines transit as not just the train stations, but also the entirety of a bus route, so in effect, that's the whole city as it's written right now. Luckily for us, though, the state is allowing cities and towns to keep existing provisions related to short-term rentals, which as I know you all know, we do have in place, and they are critically allowing site plan review processes to be used with ADUs. So this gives us the ability to actually sit down with folks who are proposing an ADU for their property, talk about a butter impacts, aesthetics, and other site-specific issues with how the structure might interact with its surroundings. So our committee did feel in our deliberations that this was important to include in some way, given how dense we are as a city and how close together a lot of properties are. We really feel that this can help preserve the privacy and livability on some of these smaller, most closely packed parcels. And of course, there are a lot of benefits to ADUs that we discussed, including less expensive living options for aging in place, multi-generational living, students, young adults trying to enter the housing market, and so on. So in terms of process, our committee has met twice to talk about the zoning. We had a marathon four-hour session last week that some of you were at, and I'm sure some of you have watched, thanks to UMA since then. Some of my colleagues have proposed additional amendments that they are planning to share with you for your consideration tonight, and then this past Friday, the state's Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, EOHLC, actually issued updated guidelines, which is sort of frustratingly last minute, but not something that we have any control over, and that, the guidelines that they issued are actually going to impact some of the decisions that our ordinance committee made in terms of amendments and recommendations that we had planned to make to you all, that again, Ms. Romero is going to go over in greater detail, but it will affect the zoning that we ultimately have to adopt and the zoning proposal that was advertised in the newspaper. So for any members of the public watching, there are just some late-breaking changes here that we're going to have to incorporate, but with that, I'll give the floor to Ms. Romero and Mr. Pratt, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor.
Do you want to put me on?
You're not on, it says you are.
I'm not, oh. Do you want to speak first, Mr. Pratt? It's up to you.
Sure, thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Alex Pratt, I'm the Director of the Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development. Thank you, Councilor, for the introduction, and for hitting many of the points that I was going to talk about, so you'll hear less of me right now. So as the Councilor mentioned, this law was passed August 6, 2024. Shortly thereafter, the mayor convened a group of city staff, including Chief of Staff Maria Louise, Chief Strategy Officer and Parking Director Ron Hogan, Building Commissioner Nelson Miller, City Planner Michelle Romero, Solicitor Alicia McNeil, my predecessor as Director of OSPCD, Debbie Burke, and then more recently, myself and another member of our staff, our Housing Program Coordinator Ben Gately, to look at the ADU issue and how this will impact Malden and what we can do to prepare and to help guide us as we present it and prepared for a presentation to you all, which is in front of you tonight. So as the Councilor mentioned, the timeline here from EOHLC was, well, first, the timeline from the law was tight, less than six months, and then the guidance from HLC was, I'm going to call it a moving target. We did not get solid information from EOHLC until the beginning of December, and then of course, that changed last week on Thursday, so you can imagine how difficult it is to prepare something on that timeline. That said, this team did our very best and approached this issue with a couple of goals in mind. Number one is complying with the law as a priority, and addressing concerns that are related to the law, including potential health concerns, nuisance concerns, safety, parking, et cetera. I think what is known is that we don't know exactly how this will affect Massachusetts, exactly how it will affect Malden, there are a number of unknowns, there are a number of moving targets here, and so the presence, the proposal that we had sent down to the council and to you all is consistent with that, trying to make sure that as this law and as the guidelines change and the regulations change, that we're doing our best both to remain compliant and to make sure that we're addressing any of those negative impacts that we want to avoid. A key piece of this are the limitations that some of the Councilors spoke to, and some of which have changed just in the last few days, what we can and cannot do in terms of our zoning ordinance on ADUs. So for example, we cannot require any affordability requirement, we can't require that a unit be sold or rented to or occupied by a low-income household, and we cannot determine a maximum rent or sale price for those units, so no affordability requirements. An owner could decide to do that on their own, but it's nothing that we can require through zoning. We can also not require any owner occupancy, either of the unit itself or of the primary dwelling, of the principal dwelling, rather, so we don't have any owner occupancy requirement ability. We have no ability under the state law or state regs for any age restrictions, familial relationships, institutional relationships in terms of schools, we don't have any regulatory power over those issues. And then with parking, as the Councilor mentioned, we cannot require any parking within a half-mile of an MBTA station, which as of the first set of rules in December, early December, was any point along any bus route operated by the MBTA as well, and as of Thursday, appears to be any bus stop, so any point along the bus route that you can get on or off. That's a, that may not have a significant difference for a community like Malden, but a community that's maybe further out of Boston that has one or two bus stops but does not have the plethora of bus routes that we have in Malden, might see more of a change. And we expect that the parking requirements and regulations may change at the state level over time as well, so the presentation that we, the proposal that we put in front of you considers that possibility, and so even though under the last set of rules, there was not a single residential parcel in Malden that where parking could be required, we know that MBTA bus routes can change, bus stops can change, definitions of what a bus station is can change, and so that's why that language was in there. And then lastly, I want to talk about just quickly, site plan review. This is, and I believe you all have received a memorandum from the mayor on this today, this is our lowest threshold review process, that still involves community involvement, community engagement. We've had success with speaking briefly about affordable housing projects over the last few years, we've had success in bringing affordable housing to Malden that the community wants and needs, in large part because we've had and allowed for a community engagement process that allows for folks to talk about what's happening in their neighborhood along the way, and we felt, especially where this is new, especially where there are a lot of moving targets, especially where the full impact of this is not yet known by anyone, that site plan review was an appropriate way to have that community involvement process and to be transparent with everyone about what is happening and when, and to make sure that the people most impacted have a voice. So that's just a little bit about our proposal and how we ended up with a proposal that was sent in front of you. As Amanda mentioned, as I'm sure Michelle included in her report, the regulations changed, so there will need to be amendments to that proposal based on those regulations we received last week, but I wanted to provide a brief overview of how we got to tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pratt. Michelle.
Thank you. I will try not to repeat anything that's already been well-covered by my colleague and by Councilor Linehan. So the proposal that's before you in City Council Paper 13/2025, the original proposal, I should refer to it as that, was a proposal that, as we heard, the mayor's team worked on drafting. That was, I will note again for the record, based on state guidelines that were released in early December. Since, we recently received updated draft guidelines, and they are still draft, they're not official yet, but they are another version of the draft guidelines we just put out last week. There are some additional recommendations for additional revisions, there are recommendations for additional revisions I will make, so that we can align the original proposal with the most recent state guidelines. First and foremost, I will draw your attention to the definition of accessory dwelling unit. A lot of the information, and I'm not going to go through the entire report and recommendation, but I just want to focus on a couple highlights before we start this public hearing. One is the definition of accessory dwelling unit, this definition that's provided here is taken right from state law, not the guidelines, this is actually from the state law, so it specifically states what it is, a self-contained housing unit inclusive of sleep and cooking and sanitary facilities on the same lot as a principal dwelling, subject to otherwise applicable dimensional and parking requirements, that one maintains a separate entrance, specifically either directly from the outside or through an entry hall or corridor with the principal dwelling, sufficient to meet the requirements of the state building code for safe access. Two, is not larger in gross floor area than half the gross floor area of the principal dwelling, or 900 square feet, whichever is smaller. And then finally, is subject to additional restrictions which may be imposed by a municipality, including but not limited to additional size restrictions and restrictions or prohibitions on short-term rental. So that's important, I put that on the front page so that we'll all keep that forefront. This is not changing, this is again, not part of the guidelines, however, the guidelines have been interpreting parts of these, some of these terms and parts of this law. In terms of location, so we, you have a couple maps in your package, the ADU may be located on a property, may be added to a property or located in a property that's in a zoning district where single-family dwellings are allowed by right or by special permit. In Malden, there are five districts where single-family dwellings are allowed, Residence A, Residence B, Residence C, Residential Office, and the Neighborhood Zoning District. You have two different maps, one, I'll just quickly note, the first one, which is Attachment 1, is the actual zoning map with all the zoning districts in their current color and configuration. If you look closely, you'll see some of them have a crosshatch. The crosshatch ones are the districts where the accessory dwelling units are not allowed, they are prohibited, or will be prohibited under this proposal. Those are the central business, highway business, industrial 1, and industrial 2. For ease of reference, though, you can see Attachment 2, which also shows the zoning districts, they're however, outlined but not colored in. That's a little easier to read in the sense of you can see the light gray is all the zoning districts where the ADU would be allowed under this proposal, the darker gray is the districts where the ADUs would be prohibited under this proposal. The gray, light gray, again, where they're required to be allowed. In terms of dimensional standards, we are allowed to regulate the ADUs in terms of dimensional setbacks, lot coverage, open space, bulk and height, and number of stories. The caveat is that we are looking at what's required for the principal dwelling, a single-family dwelling, or an accessory structure, whichever is least permissive, okay? Excuse me, more permissive, results in more permissive regulation. We can get into the details of that. Expressly, the guidelines provide we cannot consider minimum lot size. And in terms of pre-existing nonconforming structures or lots, ADUs may not be prohibited due to nonconformities. We've heard about the other prohibited requirements for ADUs, owner occupancy, there's also the laundry list of occupancy and use restrictions that my colleague, Mr. Pratt, discussed, I won't repeat those, they're here. Parking requirements, again, we heard about the half-mile radius of an MBTA station, commuter rail or bus station, which is defined as a point of embarkation for any bus, so those are the next two maps, 3 and 4, showing the circles around, circles are around the MBTA stations and all the bus routes. Attachment 4, again, is more for ease of reference, it's showing the same information but in a different format, that's showing you that the entire city is within half a mile of an MBTA transit station or bus stop, excluding that small section of Fells Way Reservation. Parking requirements, so we did that, so we cannot require any parking for these ADUs. Again, there are some specific allowed and required regulations, one single ADU at a property must be allowed by right. We can choose to allow more than one by special permit. ADUs may be subject, we heard about site plan review, they may be subject to reasonable regulations and site plan review. Reasonable regulations, again, including but not limited to site plan review, regulations concerning dimensional setbacks, and the bulk and height of structures, that is taken directly from the state law. Site plan review is defined in the guidelines. We heard about the prohibition on short-term rental of ADU, which we can continue, we currently prohibit them, we're allowed to continue that, and then importantly, what's required is compliance with building, fire, and sanitary codes for the ADUs. A couple of the brief highlights I'll mention, in this proposal, site plan review is recommended to apply to all accessory dwelling units regardless of form, so whether it's in a detached structure, in a principal dwelling, whether it's located in an existing building or in an addition. Talked about the districts where they will be allowed by right, parking requirements, I will touch upon briefly the site plan review committee that's proposed, there would be three members, a City Councilor designee, the Executive Director, or designee of the Office of Strategic Planning and Economic Development, and then the Department of Public Health Director, a designee. Submission requirements in the original proposal, which we will get to when we get into more detail, it's a long list of different requirements, some might be applicable to some projects, others may not be applicable. I will note, again, an ADU may be allowed in any building where there is a dwelling, so it could be a commercial building with a dwelling, it could be a mixed-use building. So some of the submission requirements you'll see don't appear to apply to residential properties, but keep in mind, we could see petitions for ADUs on commercial properties as well. I do have some recommendations about the submission requirements, we'll get to at the end, and then finally, the ordinance as proposed will have site plan review, as I mentioned, there was a review schedule proposed, also going to be recommending an expedited schedule for that. And finally, I will just end with, and we'll probably talk about it again, as you know, the planning board is here to make an advisory recommendation to the City Council, the council already outlined the next steps where they're going to move to consider whether to enroll and ordain before the state effective deadline. So I will end there, in the interest of time, so we can move forward with the public hearing.
Thank you very much, Michelle. So what we're moving forward, before we move forward with the public hearing, I believe we're going to hear from Councilor Winslow, who had an addendum to the council paper.
Yes, yeah, Councilor Winslow, Rules and Orders Chair, 83 Jacob Street. So the council got the mayor's memo on this, like, you know, January 3, and we had, we had our next, in our first meeting on the year of January 8. So that, and the concern, there was a very tight timeframe that we're trying to work to get this developed, and so basically, we had one meeting to maybe put in some comments. So what I did was to make sure that the public was, had transparency about what might be considered, I put in the sort of some counterpoints to the mayor's memo, so that's really some of the key intent. My concern overall was that, I mean, you know, I know I was recently before this board talking about the proposed site plan review for educational, religious, and daycare uses, and we definitely heard very clearly about having a site plan review process that's overly broad and outside kind of the scope of what the Dover Amendment might allow. So that was kind of some of what I was lurking at, and looking at the memo that came out from the mayor's office, I was very concerned that, that it was, the requirements may not be reasonable. So just to kind of go over that, so there is, in your packet, there is, basically, I took what the specific recommendations were from the staff and did some blue line striking of some other suggestions, so I'll go through those. So, so some of this is on my perspective, a little bit of being a 30-plus-year landowner, you know, homeowner in Malden, and seeing that, you know, there have been many proposals for substantial additions in my neighborhood, and what I saw that in terms of reasonableness was that ones that were in conformance generally with the existing setbacks, for instance, if someone's just trying to add a room or expand their kitchen directly back, but in my neighborhood, the existing setbacks were eight feet or less when the house was built, but now we have 10-foot requirements that were passed sometime later, that generally neighbors did not really object if you were just extending your house back to add something. So that was my first suggestion, is that we, rather than sticking to the dimensional controls that really are for new principal dwellings, that we allow some flexibility in terms of considering if you're doing an ADU attached to a existing principal thing, that you would look at existing setbacks, and those were sort of more historic, so the proposal did not do that. So that's kind of my first set, that you would, you would use those type of setbacks first, so that's one of the kinds of things. So the other thing was lot size, now, this may be really relevant, but the 7,500-square-foot lot size that we require for new principal dwellings now is substantially higher than the typical Malden lot size. I mean typically, you know, we I mean, typically, you know, when Malden was being laid out, they might be 50 feet in frontage and 100 feet deep. So a typical lot size, maybe about 5,000 square feet. And when you looked at it, I mean, I think, I think that at least 68% of our lots were 5,000 square feet or less, and if you went up to 7,500, it might severely limit the type of places where, for the ADU. And that would possibly put them in a threat, so that was one of the things. So those are a couple things. And then, you know, looking at heights and that type of thing, that, you know, there's a lot of variances in how heights can be done, so some of us to really focus on, you know, if you weren't doing an ADU that was going to be higher than the principal dwelling, you should be able to do that. So that's the type of thing, of just really to look at the existing principal dwelling that was built and looking how you kind of matched that. And I've seen, I guess, successfully that those type of additions, and some of these probably would have been ADUs, some of them worked for, you know, adult family members, you know, a dad living with his daughter and that type of thing. So they could have been ADUs if people had that choice, but because we didn't have that choice in our regs, they just ended up being big additions, so. So that, that is some of what was there. You know, I did, there was this distinction, and I think Councilor O'Malley can talk a little bit more about, you should be, should ADUs that are attached to the principal unit be treated different than detached? So that is the type of thing. So, so there's some distinctions on, you know, how often site plan review, and that was the type of thing of driving it. Should, if you looked at the site plan review requirements of what you actually have to submit for site plan review, that could be very burdensome. We understand that any building has to have pretty detailed plans, but is what's being asked for in the staff recommendation over and above what we might typically even look for, for a single-family home? So that was the type of thing. Should we make someone all, always go through that site plan review? And then there was other things in terms of, you know, not allowing any variances from the requirements related to dimensional controls, or relief or whatever. So that was the type of thing, again, to try to be more flexible, and I think in the spirit of the law, in terms of trying to limit denials to things that have the most significant impact on municipal things. And I talk about, you know, peace, inquiry, and enjoyment. That's something that when someone buys a piece of property, they enjoy that. So having some separation so that you can enjoy your property. So I think even Building Inspector Nelson mentioned that one reason for setbacks is so that someone can clean the property next door. You know, that's the type of thing that you see. So there's some reasonable things that, why we have dimensional controls. I saw during COVID, the fact that my granddaughter could run around the house, even though we don't have big setbacks, that we have these type of things, that one reason, you know, zoning happened in, was to allow, back in the day, when you had smoke, your industrial uses, to make sure people had, you know, fresh air and light for their home of housing. So that's a legitimate reason why zoning was created and these setbacks were created, and that was the pattern. So I think it is the type of thing, and we do. So that, that's the type of suggestion. Now, I did, in my paper, I talked about not having any parking requirements, and that was mostly, as Michelle pointed out, was that state draft regulations were saying that because every bus stop in the city was going to be considered a bus station, that it basically eliminated. So I didn't know why we needed to have a regulation. I mean, I, I'm not adverse just to keeping it in, but it, just to highlight, it just, that, you know, the reality is that, you know, probably to follow the state law. So that, that was really what, I put this together as a way so that it was on the council docket, it would be on the hearing tonight, so that people could discuss that in a broader way. And we did at last week's council have a pretty extensive discussion in Rules and Ordinance, and Councilor O'Malley will kind of present what the Rules and Ordinance Committee voted in terms of what these would be more recommended, and some of them even have been bypassed now by the, by the state, the updated state guidance in terms of dimensional controls and that type of thing. So that might be something we still have to further adjust, that even, even just sticking to typical setbacks of a principal unit, or like historic setbacks, existing non-conformities, that may not be sufficient, because the, the new guidelines are saying that you have to perhaps allow accessible dwelling units down to the setbacks of a, you know, an accessory use, which is less than the principal use. So that's the type of thing that we're going to have to follow up. But I'll let Councilor O'Malley. But that's really the, the point of that second paper, to make sure that the public knew that there might be some significant variances from the staff proposal. And now I think we're actually kind of force, the state updated guidance even forces our hands a little bit more. So thank you on that. I don't know if anybody has any questions, but that's really, I think, Councilor O'Malley.
Okay, so you're all set, Councilor?
I'm all set, yes.
On your presentation of your piece of what your changes were?
Yeah, I'm done.
Which it actually sounds like most of the suggestions you made were already incorporated into those revised provisions from last Thursday.
I think one key distinction that was really looking, trying to look at attached, accessible dwelling units in a different way than separated, so requiring site plan review for detached units, because the concern was that that's, those are the ones that are going to be ones where people are trying to, you know, add to a shed or a garage, stories and that type of thing to maximize out. You know, the thought was that additions to a principal unit would probably be trying to conform and match that, but it was really the concern that, you know, you know, making a shed into a dwelling or topping a garage is a lot different. But it seems like, you know, it's, you know, the state regs make from that, so.
Okay, thank you, Councilor. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Councilor O'Malley, if you'd like to come up and share what you'd like to?
Thank you very much. May I approach to pass out the committee recommendation?
And, and Councilor, while you're passing them out, have, has this been updated for the revised guidance from the state?
This copy has not.
Okay.
I'm sorry. So this, this copy that I just handed out has not. I do have one that has, but I, I didn't think that it would be, I can try to go into those changes tonight.
Okay, no, 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 because I, I know, I read the staff report, and the city planner did take an attempt at updating the original proposal for all the changes that the state made late at the 11th hour on Thursday night. So I was just curious to understand what I'm looking at here. If you could tell us what it is, who voted on it, where it came from, that would be helpful, I think.
Perfect, perfect. Yeah, so this, this is from last Tuesday, the 21st. This was the ordinance committee, which is before you tonight. We took these amendments up in order based on the red, the bolded red. Underlined is, is basically what is being added, that those words that have a strike through are being deleted. Not all of the votes were unanimous, particularly the earlier votes were not unanimous. It was, I think, 1, 2, 4, potentially. The votes kind of changed depending on that. But basically, what, to what Councilor Winslow had stated, this proposal really looks to change, to treat attached accessory dwelling units, which are physically inside the structure or attached to the structure, maybe a in-law apartment in the basement, or dormers in the attic, differently than a detached accessory dwelling unit, which could be in a garage or shed, largely located in people's backyards. The committee felt that the detached accessory dwelling units had a bigger impact on the livability of the neighborhood and would require site plan review, whereas a accessory dwelling unit that is attached is more like an addition that our building department is, is pretty familiar with, and would have less of an impact on the neighborhood. If you think about it, accessory uses such as garage, garages and sheds have different dimensional control requirements that are, basically can be as low as three feet, whereas we are proposing, you know, a different one for the principal dwelling. That was really where it came from. Whether or not we go with that is kind of to be determined. But basically, what you see here is that attached would be allowed by right in Residence A, B, C, Residential Office, and Neighborhood Business, but it would require some type of vetting by the building commissioner under the reasonable regulation standard, which would include dimensional controls and parking. We then moved on to the, the intensity regulations, which are dimensional controls, and we were, we're reducing the square footage of the parcel that's no longer applicable. We cannot do that. Additionally, one of the things we wanted to do is we wanted people to be able to benefit from their, their prior pre-existing non-conformity. So if your home had, say, rather than a 10-foot side setback, but had an 8-foot side setback, we wanted you to be able to take advantage of that, rather than having to push your, if you say you want to do an addition off the back of your home, we didn't want you to have to just bump it in two feet. We wanted you to be able to use and benefit your existing non-conformity. The same thing applies for the rear side back, the rear setback. So as you'll see, we basically said for side, we said 10 feet, or the same as the existing principal structure, whichever is lesser. For both sides, we said 20 feet, or the same as the existing principal structure, whichever is lesser. In the rear, we switched from 20 feet to 15, or the same as existing principal structure or lesser. Now, the thing is, with these new regulations that just came out, it's still not quite clear to me, but it looks as though we have to accept the setbacks as low as the three or six feet required for accessory uses. I don't particularly think that's a good thing. I would prefer to, to keep these ones, but our, our hands are kind of tied. It's still a bit of a gray area. Aside from that, we, we pretty much just wanted to keep it at two and a half stories. One of the reasons being is the way height is measured in Malden is that it's the mean of your roofs, so it makes it difficult to extend a ridge line, because if you have multiple roofs of different heights, it can bring down the mean of the total height and require you to do some wonky things when a, a simple addition that extends the ridge line might be the least invasive for the neighborhood. If we go to the second page of what I handed out, we pretty much were saying that site plan review, again, would only apply to detached, and that it would, site plan review would not go through for attached. One of the reasons being is I attended the, the various webinars that the EOHLC, the Housing and Livable Communities Agency, had related to this. That's the entity that will kind of vet and look at whether or not our regulations are reasonable. And on the webinar, they had said that you have to, by, at the bare minimum, treat accessory dwelling units the same that you would treat a single-family home. Now, the regulations say, or the existing use of the principal structure, so if that's a two-family, a three-family, a four-family, or whatever, they get to benefit, or, or an accessory structure, like a garage or a shed. You have to treat it with the most permissible dimensional controls out of all of those different uses. And I know it's super complicated, but that, that is the, the reason why we are really kind of trying to separate these two uses. We're trying to encourage people to not do detached in the backyard. We're trying to encourage people to do the attached in the existing principal dwelling, because we think it's going to be the least impactful in the neighborhood. The fire code gets involved, which is super complicated, because when you add some additional units, sometimes the fire code can get triggered. So I don't know if we're going to be able to incentivize people to do attached in the principal dwelling, but I think we should do whatever we can to try to get these units in the existing structure and not in the garages and in the sheds. Aside from that, we were, we were, and we didn't make these amendments, but some of the discussion in, in committee also revolved around whether or not we should require pre-existing non-conforming properties that want to do an ADU to get a variance for their existing non-conformities, if they were to add an ADU. I don't know where the, the committee is going to end up on that, but the, the planning board should know that we are looking at maybe not requiring variances for, for the principal structure and allowing people to benefit from their non-conformity. And the reason being is so many of our properties were built in, in the 1800s before zoning existed, sometimes over 100 years before zoning existed, and they were not required to have parking because cars did not exist. And so what we're saying is if you live in those type of properties and you just happen to have parking, but you're not required to have parking because of when your home was built, you should not be penalized if you want to add an accessory dwelling unit, especially because those are some of the properties that might be best suited for that. I do also want to say that, you know, the, one of the challenges that we're facing and why this does impact such a large swath of our community is because we've inherited zoning that doesn't reflect the reality of what our community is. Our community is not entirely, or 90%, single-family homes. It's two families, it's three families, it's four families, it's more than that. And so the, the challenge is, when you have so many, so much of the city zoned for Residence A, single-family homes, it, it just doesn't reflect the character of the neighborhood. When you have dimensional controls that restrict single-family homes, that almost, I would say, almost no properties comply with our dimensional controls, which is the reason why so many of you and our, in our, in our residents have to get variances. So that's really why the state put this as a protected use. We have to be reasonable in the regulations, and those regulations can always be waived a bit, whether that's by the, the site plan review committee or the building commissioner. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer those, and I appreciate your time and patience. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Pat Hayes.
Thank you, Councilor. Just one question. You were talking about the two, the two processes, one for detached and one for, that's part of the building. You made the comment that the, the law from the state is leaning toward being the most permissive. If we don't separate those two with a separate process, would that put us in a position where a side yard setback that was eight feet could now suddenly be three feet because of the accessory limitations that we have for like the garage or the shed?
So I, I can't speak in definitives, because this is changing so, so rapidly. So I, I can't tell you whether or not that would happen for, for a fact. And I, and I would defer to, to the city planner and, and our legal staff to, to give you a definitive answer on that. But the reason why I'm trying to, we were trying to make the, the attached by right and have the least amount of hoops to jump through was because we wanted it to be very, not very easy, but easier for people to do that than to put it in their garages. Whether or not that's going to actually happen, I don't know. And once you take the fire code into consideration, it actually is incentivizing people to do detached in their garages, because you're not going to have to comply with the same fire codes that you would if you had to do a three-family. That is what we're kind of up against here, is that the way our, our fire regulations are, is actually going to encourage people to put these in detached structures. So whatever we can do to encourage it inside the house, I think is going to be the least impactful. And which, which dimensional control, like which setback applies, I really can't tell you. It's a little unclear about whether or not the principal structure now gets the benefit from the lower accessory use setback, which would likely be six feet, unless it was less than 72 square feet and less than eight, eight feet high. Then it's three feet. I've learned the zoning very well recently.
Thank you. I, I didn't know if the seminars you participated in had any insight into that, that's why.
No, and the, and the seminars happened before the updated regulations, so they unfortunately don't 100% apply anymore.
Thank you.
Okay, Diane Chua.
I don't understand why we're making it different between a detached and attached. I kind of understand where you're coming from, where you don't want everyone converting their garages or their sheds, but that's the sole purpose, I'm thinking, of having these ADUs, is so that you could have somebody on your same lot, you know, a family member or whomever. Especially, I'm thinking, if you own a single-family home and you happen to have a two-car garage with a loft above, and you want to get your son out of the house, wouldn't that be a great place to put him?
That would be an attached, just so you, that, that would be an example of an, is it attached to the structure, you're saying it's a separate garage?
No, no, it's, it's a garage in the backyard, long driveway, then, you know, so he'd have the his own way in and out. Excuse me, exactly, where Fonzie lived. You know, but I'm I'm thinking that's pretty much the, I thought was the rule that they were, not the rule, but that's what they were kind of going for if you have the ability to do that. And some people I know do have finished rooms that they got permits for and all of that over their garages already. So why make them go through a site plan review committee to say, yes, they can live there when they already got a permit to, you know, maybe if they have to add a kitchen or a bathroom or something like that. But I just know there are some that have gotten permission to already have those things, maybe not to the extent of like having a kitchen in it, but like a family room, things like that. So I was just kind of curious as to why it's such a bone contention.
I think that, like, part-time use as like a fun room or a place to hang out is different than, you know, people cooking, people sleeping, people going to the bathroom in it. And the the thought was that because the detached garages or sheds have such a smaller setback to your neighbors, whereas, you know, the principal dwelling might be, you know, 10, 8, 6 feet from the, from the, from the property line, a garage could be like potentially three feet or less in Malden. Sometimes they're one or two feet. And if you're now building up, say, like a one-story garage, you're adding windows, you're now looking into your neighbor's yard where they might have a pool or a jacuzzi. We were, we were saying that, you know, we're not going to be able to prevent them from doing it in their garage, but through the site plan review process, we might be able to say, hey, don't put windows on that side or add some type of privacy screening through that site plan review process. Whereas if it was dormers in the attic, it's it's already in the existing structure. There's really not going to be the same impact on your neighbors in someone's backyard. But I I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, because with that respect, if it was, like I said, they already have a room above there, so they're not going to be adding any more windows, they're just maybe going to be adding a kitchen. So, or a bathroom, I don't know, whatever. But I'm just curious how that would work. You know, I can understand if they have a shed and they want to make that shed a house, you know, that should kind of have a little bit more, but I'm thinking of a garage that already has a room above it. Why would that be different?
In that particular instance, I think it would very easily get through the site plan review process, whereas like a shed would likely not. But in the other dynamic is, we were thinking about the 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 cost. It's going to be much more expensive to run utilities to a garage than it would be to benefit from the existing utilities in the principal structure, whether that's sewer, electrical, water. But again, attached would also be like an addition off the back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Diane. Eric Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Counselor, just put yourself in and Counselor Winslow as well, but I've heard multiple times, you guys have had more contact with this and, and, you know, it's been a long month, if you will, but you've had more contact time with this than I have, but I've heard many times tonight, it's not clear. I don't know, I'm confused. And I'm, I'm confused as well. Counselor Winslow gave us one paper that was suggesting of 5,000 square feet. He handed us another paper that's suggesting of 3,500 square feet. The ordinances currently written are at 7,500 square feet. When I first joined the planning board, they were at 6,000. I personally thought this was, you know, still think that that was exclusionary zoning, to take it from 6,000 even to 7, 750. But is there any thought given to, with regards specifically to the square footage? Is there any thought from the ordinance committee to try to adjust the, that portion of the, of our zone zoning to?
So for the parcel square, so just, yeah, to the the staff report indicates, I think, striking this entire row, correct?
Yes, the new guideline states we cannot consider lot size at all. So I would, you know, you're welcome to ask about it, but there's no real point to discuss it at this point.
Yeah, unfortunately, Eric, last Thursday, the state changed the guidelines. So what happened was the, the working committee came up with something based on December guidelines. Counselor Winslow made some suggestions based on the December guidelines, as did the ordinance committee last week. Then on Thursday afternoon, the state released new ones that said you can't limit the, you can't limit it based on any type of lot size. So as of now, the current guidance is you can't limit it on lot size at all. So on all three of the proposals that were reviewed, we can't, we can't do that. And Michelle has covered that in the staff report, and she'll address it later on, that, that, yeah, we originally thought we could do that, but now the state has said, no, we can't. And there's a few other things, no dimensional controls, nothing on height, nothing on prior non-conformities. So if you've got a lot that, as the counselors were saying, it's got a non-conformity to side yard setback, you have to go with the most permissible one of the, of the main structure. So if that's got like a five-yard setback, then anything associated with the A D U would not be any worse than that non-conformity that already exists. Is that said correctly, Michelle?
I don't think that's 100% correct on the non-conforming part. But we can get into the, the details of those guidelines when, when we get to that. But you, you'd have to look at, the state has now said, we'll look at the principal dwelling, a single-family standard, and the accessory structure, and pick the least permissive of the three.
The most permissive.
I'm sorry, the most, I keep saying least. The least restrictive, the most permissive. That's not the same as what are we going to deal with existing non-conformities. That's a different question. That's a different question. But, you know, we, as, as the chair said, I haven't tried to address it when we get to that point in the recommendations. But I just want everyone to finish. I have one question for the ordinance committee.
Okay, we have two people. Eric, are you all set?
Yes and no. Actually, I'm understanding, I guess I'm understanding about the, you know, the, the square footage, as far as this paper and ADUs are, is, is, is not relevant. But my, I'm still kind of asking the question to the ordinance committee with regards to 7,500 square foot for lots, because I think it was said that that it, how many lots in Malden can actually build on? We don't have that many kind of lots, and, you know, so that, is there any consideration to go back and, and review lot size in Malden?
So I, I hear, I hear what Mr. Henry is saying. So what yours, so, and that's one of the challenges that we, we face is the ordinance committee, because ADUs are a protected use that are governed by the reasonable regulation standard, which means our ordinances have to be reasonable. And so at, at first, we were taking our single-family home standard, because that's what the regulations allowed, and we basically just mirrored that. That's the original proposal that you have before you today. And what, what the ordinance committee, you know, I think the consensus, it wasn't unanimous, but one of the, the consensus in the committee is that it's hard to take the single-family home standard in Malden with the 7,500 and all of the other requirements, because no, barely any properties, if any properties, actually comply with that. And so if you take a, what looks like an unreasonable standard and apply it to a protected use, like accessory dwelling units, then it likely could get struck down by the state. So I hear what you're saying, that the, that maybe the single-family home lot sizes and other dimensional controls need to be looked at, because no properties comply with them. But unfortunately, that's not something we can do here, because it's not something that was posted for this public hearing. But if it's something that you're passionate about, I would recommend maybe working with the, the planning board in recommending that change, because the planning board can, can propose zoning amendments. But you also have the entire ordinance committee here, as well as more, more counselors that I'm sure hear what you're saying. We just need to understand what is the consensus of the community.
Thank you. I'm going to yield, but I would, I'd like to follow up with that with the planning board, because I was totally unaware of that process. We'd like to take that up, but thank you.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Eric McCush.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not even sure if you have the correct one to address for this, but to me, the state mandate seems like a massive overreach. We just went through the whole M B T overlay, which is very similar forced multi-family housing situation, and we're going, put in a position to turn every single-family house in Malden into a two-family. Was there any consideration to actually challenging this law rather than change all our ordinances to fit within it?
So I can't speak for the entire council or other branches of government, but, you know, the city of Malden is a political subdivision of the Commonwealth. The Commonwealth gives us parameters in which we operate, state law, whether it's public records or zoning. And so they, the state, I believe, did learn their lesson from the M B T community zone, where they initiated and promulgated regulations through a expedited process that did not comply with, I think it's the Administrative Procedures Act. So my understanding is that when it came to this, knowing that that was a controversy, they dotted their i's and crossed their t's. So we, this is, I don't believe this is something that is going to be able to be stopped, maybe delayed, but the end is going to, you're going to get to the end, whether or not it's six months from now or a year.
Eric, are you all set, Eric?
I just wanted to add respectfully, Counselor O'Malley, to that. Another, a key difference here is that with 3A, we had zoning that the state had to actually approve, sign off on, and then certify that we were in compliance. There is no regulatory process like that with this. So regardless of what we do, the way the state has written this, it actually updates 40A, the Dover Amendment, which is the section of zoning that we basically don't have control over, it's governed schools, churches, et cetera. So when it goes into effect on February 2nd, it's not something that if we haven't submitted our zoning to be looked at, it makes a difference. It just, the state overrides us automatically at midnight that day, and whatever we have on the books, as long as it complies, can add to that, but it can't be more restrictive. So it is slightly different. I think this is a question the community has been asking a lot, too. Why do we not fight it or not comply? But there actually isn't a compliance step. It's just, as long as we don't ban ADUs, then we don't have to fix anything. And currently, our zoning doesn't speak to ADUs at all. So this is adding in a measure of protection within the constraints that's allowed, but it just goes into the Dover Amendment and becomes a protected use statewide.
Thank you, Counselor. Eric McCush, are you all set?
I am, thank you.
Ken Intenucci.
Yeah, that recent question actually made me think of something else, but I'll just go with my original question here now, because that's, that's a, that's a lot to swallow. Going back to what I was actually going to ask at the first time was, does the latest updates of the state guidance make any changes or reference or recommendations for site plan review? Or is, or requirement for, is that something we are still trying to decide whether we can even?
The site plan, site plan review is specifically mentioned in the state law, and it's allowed, and it's specifically mentioned and defined in the guidelines.
Even the newest guidelines?
Yes, even the most, even the latest guidelines, yes.
The latest guidelines are taking pretty much everything out.
They're, they're clarifying and updating and changing and adding. So there are new provisions in the new guidelines. I would say there, there, I would characterize them as more has been added to the guidelines, the latest guidelines. But no, the site plan review, as I said, is, is actually stated in the law as an option. So that is an option.
So they, they have left that in there at least?
It's in the law, and it's referenced in the guidelines, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ronnie Verma. Risa. Hold on a second here. Oh, okay. Peg, I'm sorry, Risa, Peg Crowe, Counselor Crowe.
Thank you, Rich Tooman. I just actually wanted to mention about what Mr. Henry had mentioned about what that we said about the 7,500, the 5,000, the 3,500. And from what, I'm sorry, I still have a cold, I'm, whatever. The, so it sounds great, but that, that anybody, what, the 7,500 square feet, and maybe that is something we look back at in overriding zoning for single-family housing. But that was to be consistent, and they, the state guidelines kind of said, be consistent. So the 7,500 is what we have right now. Anyone can come with an A D U with anything, with 1,000 square feet, 2,000 square feet, 3,500, doesn't matter. But I think the consistency to say, a single-family house says 7,500 right now, maybe we change that, but you still can come in if you have something lower. And then the site plan review says, okay, you have a much smaller lot, but it makes sense that you can have an A D U, or you have a much smaller lot, and it doesn't make any sense, because you are like, you know, not conforming to anything as it is. So I think to be consistent, to have multiple numbers seems a little chaotic to me. So that's why I am the one that voted no on a couple of these things in the ordinance committee, because I do think we need some consistency. What I honestly feel like is that we need to be the most restrictive as we can, because we can always lighten up, but we can never tighten up. So if we ever do something different and the law keeps changing, so just to that point, I think some things have to be some consistency in what we have in other parts of the zoning, so then we can, and as everything changes, we shift, too. But if we have 3,500, 5,000, 7,500, it's very chaotic. So we have 7,500 right right now, I think we should keep that as the, the number. People can still come in, and I think somebody on the ordinance committee had said, can be too an asterisk to say, like, you know, e, e, even if your lot is not 7,500 square feet, you can still come in for an A D U, and that's okay. But to lower it so much, just, I, I think makes it a little too not conforming to anything.
Thank you, Counselor. Risa Gray.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Did you say that the setback requirements are more permissive for an A D U addition than a standard addition to expand a house?
Yeah, so the updated regulations say specifically.
The answer is yes. Yes.
The answer is yes.
Okay.
To put an addition on a house, you would need to comply with the setbacks. To build an A D U, you would, we would look at what is the least restrictive. So what's the more permissive? Is it the principal dwelling, single-family dwelling, or accessory structure?
So somebody could put a larger addition on?
For an entire unit, right, not just for a family room or expand a kitchen. It could, it would, it would be for the A D U, which is defined as a complete unit.
Whether it's detached or attached? Sorry? You could put an expansion on?
Do you want to? Well, Risa was, I don't know.
Well, you jumped in, so you might as well jump in. I'm sure Risa will yield to you at the moment. We'll come back to you, Risa.
Sorry about the lack of, I don't know what rules that apply here are, but, so what you just said, Michelle, so you could actually add on to your existing structure, but because the setbacks were less for an A D U, if you had, like, say, a detached garage, you could actually build it to, you think, Counselor O'Malley keeps using the, like, the three-foot setback versus the 10-foot setback, so you could actually put an addition on your house with a closer, with a reduced setback to meet in for an A D U?
It seems to suggest that, yes. I'll leave it at that, yes.
Okay. That's what I thought you were saying.
And if I could just read the definition?
It's the requirement, it's not what's existing, it's the requirement. So it's not exactly what you just said, it's the requirement. That's why the non-conforming thing is, is different.
Okay.
It's not that you're already in violation of the setback, it's that you would be held to certain standards, whichever of these three is least.
Are you all set, Ken?
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor O'Malley, did you have something you wanted to read?
Just the definition, because, I mean, if everyone, if anyone here or at home is lost, trust me, there, we kind of all are, like, but that's why I think it's really important to read the definition. So the, of- to read the definition. So the, of the current standards say, dimensional standards, any requirement concerning dimensional standards such as dimensional setbacks, lot coverage, open space, bulk and height, and the number of stories that are more restrictive than is required for the principal dwelling, whatever that is, whether it's single-family or three or more, or a single-family residential dwelling, or an accessory structure, such as a garage, in the zoning district in which the protected use ADU is located, whichever results in a more permissive regulation, that's what you have to go with. It doesn't really make sense grammatically, but that's what you have to go with. And the question is, does the accessory structure setback only apply to the accessory structures that benefit already from that structure, like garages or the sheds? Or could a attached addition benefit from that six-foot largely setback? I don't know where that's going to end up, but you could read this both, you could kind of read it the other way, that an addition would benefit from that, and you can go as close as six feet to your neighbor. Or if you have an existing house that has a lesser one, some houses have no setback, they're directly up next to it. There, you would not have to comply potentially. It's not clear.
Okay, thank you, Councilor. Risa Gray, we'll come back to you. Was there anything else you would like to add?
I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just clarify, Mr. Chair, I thought you were asking about an addition versus an ADU. You weren't asking about an addition of an ADU. Or could you clarify? Because I was answering maybe a different question.
I was asking about an addition that is an ADU versus expanding a house, but not...
Okay, so you were asking, the addition to the house that's not an ADU could be subject to different requirements than if it's being used for an ADU?
Correct, that's what I was asking.
Okay, so that's what I was answering. And the reason it doesn't make sense is because that that section is listed into unreasonable regulations. So those are prohibitions that council was reading from. So they're telling you what we can't do.
Are you all set, Michelle?
Yes, thank you.
Are you all set, Risa?
Yes, thank you.
Councilor O'Malley, anything else you'd like to add?
No, that's all, thank you.
Thank you very much. At this point, we would, we will proceed with anyone that would like to speak in favor of the council paper. Anyone who would like to speak in favor. And what I'd like to ask you to do, if you do come up to the podium, please make sure you sign the clipboard with your name and address, so we have correct spelling, and announce your name and residential address for the record. So anyone who would like to speak in favor. Yeah. So if you'd like to speak in favor, come up, name and address, residential address for the record, and please sign the clipboard. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Thong San. I live in 24 Stanton Street in Malden for under Route 6, under Midtown Road. I have a 6,000 acre square feet of lot, and my current structure is sitting on one side of the lot. And basically, I have a 3,000 square feet, like, it's like a square, rectangular square, pretty nice lot. So I talked to one of the structural engineering to purpose, to family housing. He drew up the plan, I submit to the city hall, and I got denied, basically saying that the residential aid is not allowed to family, to family housing. So I'm here to request to change up the zoning code to allow...
I think that would be a different process you need to go through. What we're doing here is discussing this ADU paper. So if you would like to speak in favor of this ADU paper, that's what we're actually entertaining at the moment. If you're requesting that you want to do a specific project, you would need to come into the building department and, or monitor how this evolves over the next week or so, and then see how it impacts your specific situation. Okay, so do you, so do you want to speak in favor of this paper?
No, sir, I just want to purpose my, what I need to do.
Okay, yeah, and it's a little premature for that at the moment. We're still discussing how we're gonna, how the planning board is going to recommend the Council act tomorrow night, right? That's what we're doing tonight. Then tomorrow evening, the city council will take up what the, what the planning board recommends, and then they will decide how they're going to proceed, because as Councilor Linehan mentioned, the deadline is Sunday. So, so we're, normally, there is more time in between this type of joint hearing and then what happens, and then what the city council does, and what the ordinance committee does. But because we're kind of under the gun here by the state with the, the effective date being February 2nd, that's why it's a little bit more compressed, the timeframe. So what I'd recommend you do is keep an eye on tonight, keep an eye on what the council does tomorrow, and then see what actually gets adopted, and then evaluate how your specific situation falls into that. And at that point, if you have any questions, I'd go to the building department and ask them, how does this apply to you? Michelle, would you agree?
No, I was just going to say, I thought he was speaking in favor of the paper, because he couldn't, he couldn't convert from a single to a two, but he would be able to add a unit. I thought, I thought he was in favor. Do you want to just clarify whether he's in favor?
Well, yeah, no, I'll ask him again, because I thought he was, he was asking for his specific situation.
Oh, I thought he was describing what happened, and that's why he's in favor. I thought he said that.
Right, I'm also saying that because of the residential aid, the law preventing any citizen, not only me, to add another, to family, adding another unit, only residential zone aid.
Okay, so we'll take it that you're in favor of this paper in adopting the ADUs?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else? Hold on a second, Councilor. If she'd speak in the microphone, please?
No, Sam had reached out to me back, back in June, as a veteran who was looking to, you know, he had explored this. So I, it seems like the type of thing he was looking for in June may be something that could be considered. So that's why I specifically made sure he was aware of this. So I can send that and put that in the record if Sam would like. But basically, he's, you know, he's a homeowner on Stanton Street and thinks he has a lot big enough to allow additional housing, and he has a family, a growing family. So that's what, why I reached out to him, to make sure he had got to express that. So, thank you.
Yeah, he signed it. Okay, thank you very much. Yep. Anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this council paper? In favor? Okay, Diane, I understand you have some letters to read in favor.
Yes, I do. This one is dated January 27, 2025. It's to the Malden City Council and Malden Planning Board from Mayor Gary Christensen. I write to follow up on our proposal recently submitted to the city council regarding accessory dwelling, dwelling units, ADUs, and the local zoning process that will apply. Our team spent a significant amount of time in coming up with a proposal that was submitted, and I appreciate the effort and time that the city council has spent considering it as well. At this point, I believe it is worth mentioning that our administration has been a strong advocate for more housing, especially as it pertains to affordable housing. From the Salvation Army project to the Bryant Street proposal, to providing hundreds of affordable housing units at Overlook Ridge, we have been doing all that we can to address this pressing need, and we've done this in a transparent way by involving the community in these projects. That process remains the same in the proposal before you tonight, as we included a requirement that ADUs be subject to a site plan review process. The process is intended to provide a transparent decision-making platform, which that same open dialogue can occur between neighbors. Site plan review is the lowest threshold group decision-making process we have at our disposal. It represents a minimal burden on those proposing to add ADUs, and will provide an absolutely critical opportunity for neighbors to have input. Each neighborhood across the city has its own unique characteristics. They vary in density, housing type, and challenges. Site plan review is the right place to have a balanced discussion around proposals in a way that promotes both housing production and respect for the neighborhood. The recent revisions to the state regulations make a site plan review process with public engagement even more crucial. The removal of a minimum lot size and the addition of the least restrictive dimensional controls creates the opportunity for large buildings on small parcels. The expansion of these uses in dense neighborhoods warrant public engagement. The inclusion of site plan review remains something I am committed to as a requirement for any zoning language to be signed off on. I strongly encourage you to keep that in place for all the proposed accessory dwelling units. I cannot support a paper absent that provision, provision, or where it is applied to only a certain type of proposed ADU. Thank you again for your hard work on this important matter. This letter is dated January 27 to the Malden Planning Board and City Council Ordinance Committee. Dear Malden Planning Board and Ordinance Committee, unfortunately, I am unable to, I am unable to attend this evening's meeting due to a prior commitment. However, I would like to go on record as supporting Mayor Christensen and his team's approach to accessory dwelling units, ADUs. Once again, the state has imposed an unfunded mandate on Malden, similar to the MBTA zoning law, which disproportionately affects poorer communities in the Commonwealth. This sweeping proposal will harm Malden residents, students, and businesses. With some, while some call these units by endearing names like granny flats, nanny flats, and backyard cottages, or mother-in-law suites, I see them as hobbit sheds and basement dungeons. Ultimately, they are simply additional housing units with only size as a limitation. One major concern is the lack of an owner occupancy requirement in the state law. These units are allowed by right, leaving Malden with minimal control beyond a site plan review. Additionally, the law requires no parking spaces for these units anywhere in the city. While some claim ADUs will make housing more affordable, I believe they will actually drive up housing costs. Homeowners and companies could buy properties, add an ADU, and rent both units at market rates, further reducing affordability. Over the past year, residents have repeatedly expressed a desire for more green space, less density, reduced traffic, and increased affordability. This law achieves none of these goals. Instead, it exacerbates the issues by potentially turning ADUs into condos. Malden already ranks 50th in the Commonwealth for density. Adding new units without parking, infrastructure upgrades, or adjustments to the school funding formula will have a profound negative effect on our community. This law is superficial and provides no real benefits to Malden. While the mayor's proposal cannot stop this mandate, his recommendation for requiring the site plan review for all applications is the least the city can do for its residents. Transparency, environmental justice, and community engagement have been emphasized by many of my colleagues. Denying residents the opportunity for a public hearing to ask questions and voice concerns is unreasonable. Public hearings are required for matters as small as a cutting a tree, curb-cutting, or adding a deck. Stripping residents of their voice on an issue of this magnitude is unacceptable. Sincerely, Greg Spatafora, Craig Spatafora, City Councilor at Large, 75 Elm Street, Malden. This is dated January 27, addressed to Michelle Romero. I write in support of building ADUs in Malden. As in other Boston-area cities, they could begin, they could begin help alleviate the high cost of housing in Malden, especially for the first-time homebuyers. And ADUs would help families with aging adults and children who need more living space. And more importantly, every unit built is ideally a person housed. Moreover, building ADUs could be a relatively efficient way to build more rental units that meet modern building codes. And while I am not in favor of unrestricted development, I believe that the city of Malden should not require variances or restruct ADU construction on the basis of a minimum lot size. Preserving green space and emergency access to specific locations are important. Of course, ADUs are only one step in solving the housing crisis, but it is a step in the right direction. We should be trying to help people, and this is a reasonable and relatively easy way to help working people who need it. I live in Malden with my wife and two young children. We bought a house in Malden in the summer of 2020. It was our first and only house. My wife and I both work as teachers. We cannot afford our house now if we had to purchase it today. I think it is sad that people like us who love Malden cannot move here. I want to make it possible for people to stay in Malden or move to Malden. The city is a wonderful, diverse place. Different people have different needs, and I believe that we should be making it easier for people to build ADUs to meet those diverse needs. Thank you for attention to this important matter. Sincerely, Danielle DeFraya, 25 North Milton Street, Malden. Letter dated, email dated Monday, January 27, addressed to Michelle Romero. It says, "Good afternoon. My name is Katie Dillon. I am a Malden resident living at 198 Mount Vernon Street. Thank you for the opportunity to provide public comment on this very important issue. I have direct connection and experience with the Commonwealth's housing crisis with multiple angles. As a person working on the front lines of the crisis and as a person hoping to be able to purchase a home in Malden in the near future, I'm currently the Assistant Director of the Malden Warming Center, and I see how burdensome the housing cross, burdensome the housing crisis is. We have been reaching capacity every single night. Last night, Sunday, January 27, we turned four people away at the door and received at least one phone call from someone seeking shelter, which is about our average this season. Days before Christmas, I turned away a record number of 21 people needing a warm and stay place to stay. As a reminder, the Malden Warming Center's capacity is 25. People are in desperate need of shelter and should be looking at how we can create more expansive opportunities for housing, not creating more restrictions. Following a flexible and non-restrictive zoning policy for ADUs is a significant step in the right direction, as it allows families to provide extra housing for adult, children, or elderly parents. And as I understand it, the existence of ADUs create opportunities for first-time homebuyers like me to have more affordable, excuse me, more affordable options for purchasing homes or condos. It will also provide opportunities for folks who already own homes to afford to stay in their homes. The plans submitted by the mayor's office in January, respectfully, are quite restrictive, particularly the various required approvals, required lot size, and variances. It seems needlessly burdensome. Some of the restrictions, like preserving green space or access between existing buildings for emergency services, are reasonable and necessary. But I worry that providing too many barriers will restrict creating more housing units. Thank you for hearing my comments and for creating this opportunity for discussion. It is my sincere hope that Malden can continue to become a welcoming and inclusive place for all people and create opportunities for folks to live here." An email dated Monday, January 27, addressed to, it says, "Dear Public Hearing Clerk, please read my public comment. Enter the record at January 27, 2025. Public hearing referenced below. Thank you. Dear Joint Public Hearing of the Planning Board with City Council Rules and Ordinance Committee, please post all documents, plans, research, rationale, parcel analysis, and proposals introduced at your public hearing on zoning amendments as related to the accessory dwelling units prior to the city council meeting scheduled for January 28. As you know, the city council will be further considering this topic on January 28, and there is a clear public interest in having a comprehensive collection of all relevant documents available to the public prior to that meeting. Please include all revisions to any documents which were brought into the January 27, 2025 Planning Board meeting and discussed in relation to accessory dwelling units. The city council is scheduled to meet on January 28 to discuss, to further discuss and possibly ordain amendments to chapters and subsections of the Malden City Code under Title 12 zoning related to this matter. As a result, timely release of this information is critical. Thank you. Sincerely, Brian Delacy, 1 Earl Street, Malden."
Is that all you have in favor, Diane?
That's all I have, yes.
Counselor Winslow, did you have something to say in favor?
Yeah, I just want to make sure Mr. Thong's comments are, I actually have a written comment I received from Mr. Thong. I just want to read a paragraph of that, and I sent it to Michelle. Just, I think there was a little misunderstanding between you and him in the dialog, so I just want to make sure it's clear why, what he's talking about. So this is directly from Mr. Thong's email back in June. "After I was honorably discharged from the Navy, I bought my three-bedroom house on 24 Stanton Street in Malden after, about 12 years ago, my two little children ages six and four years old, and my parent. My first room was for my two children, second room for my parent, and my third room for myself and the wife. As time went by, the number of people in my family is growing. I have another two-year-old child, and my parent-in-law were also moved in with us. With today's housing crisis and the struggle of being high-rent, we can't afford to rent or purchase another house for them to live in. Basically, I'm stuck on having two families living in a small, single house." So that's kind of the crux of his comment. So, Sam, would you, is that, you okay? So I just want to make sure that's on the record, that that's really the intent of his comment. So that's what was...
Okay, thank you, Counselor, for reading that in and clarifying that. Thank you. Yeah, Michelle?
Could you just tell me, you said you sent that to me? I'd never received it. Could you tell me the date?
I just sent it to you now.
Oh, oh, I thought you meant previously. I had never received it, otherwise I would have, what's the date on it? June, you said?
Yeah, I got it in June, so I asked Mr. Thong to come and speak.
Okay, so you sent it to me, though? Okay, thank you.
I just, I sent it and tried to send it to you.
Okay, thank you.
But I just wanted to make sure Mr. Thong, that's really, like, he represented it to me, so I just want to make sure he, that's written in the record, so that's an understanding of what really, while he's here tonight, he's so good.
Thank you, Counselor. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this council paper? Anyone else in favor? CNN here and none, declare that part of the hearing closed. Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to this council paper? Anyone in opposition? Diane, do you have anything to read in opposition?
I do not.
Seeing no one that would like to speak in opposition, declare that part of the hearing closed. Michelle, can you take us through your staff report?
Yes, and I will just note, I did hand Diane that last email, it went in in favor, although it really was neither in favor nor in opposition, the one from Mr. Delacy. It was asking for records. So just wanted to note that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I did have, before I start, Mr. Chair, if I could, I had one question. I was in attendance at the ordinance committee meeting on the 21st, and I know the Counselor referenced some votes having been taken, and I'm wondering if the Chair could just, it was my, in my notes, it indicates that the motion regarding site plan review was, did not pass. Did it pass, or what was the vote? I might have written it down wrong. It was, there was a lot going on, and I was trying to listen. Just curious if somebody could clarify. I know some of the votes were, so did they all pass the proposed amendments in that paper that we saw?
I think it ultimately did. I think the reason it was a little confusing is because we initially had made a motion to put the lot size down to zero and keep site plan review unchanged. And then when we were advised, again, of course, before the guidelines that came out Friday, when we were advised that putting it down to zero was not an advisable approach, we then retook the vote, and it did pass to separate detached and attached into site plan review.
Okay, but it wasn't unanimous, but it was, you did take the vote that passed, right?
Yes, I think Counselor Crowe voted against, but it did pass, is my recollection.
For the site plan review? Because I had something written down, three to two, or two to three, and I wasn't sure what that was.
I think Counselor O'Malley has the most clear.
I have the draft minutes that have yet to be approved. You're asking about the site plan review, making it by right for attached?
Well, it's by right for everything, but which would you, were the requirement site plan review only for detached?
Correct. So the ones that would make it all yes. Hold on one second.
Well, I mean, the councils are here tonight, but that's fine. I don't want to delay on that.
One second. I apologize. Because the motion was actually made by Counselor Lanningham in the end. Yeah.
So was it three to two?
It was, it was three to two, yeah.
Okay, so that passed, but, okay, I see, okay. I couldn't, all right, thank you. So I'm reading from the report and recommendation dated January 27, 2025. Won't read it verbatim into the record, but it's referenced and incorporated herein, it's referenced and incorporated herein by reference to the record. So we heard about the petition. There is also, in addition to the follow-up memorandum that was read in favor, there was a memorandum dated January 2, 2025, from Mayor Christensen that introduced the paper as part of, along with the sponsor. So you do have a copy of that. We won't read that into the record. I'm going to try not to repeat. Again, the proposal is intended to update the zoning ordinance to comply with the new state law. There are additional recommendations that we will discuss that I would suggest are necessary to further update this proposal to align with these recent draft guidelines. So we've already talked about the definitions, the locations. Lot of this we've been through, I'm not going to read it again. The original paper does, I will note, and you all have a copy of the paper, you have a copy of the original paper that was proposed, 13-2025, you have a copy of Counselor Winslow's addendum. You also received a copy of amendments that were discussed at the ordinance committee that weren't part of the original paper. I want to note that the original proposal at the time, as I said, was based on state guidelines that we had at the time, and it was understood that special permit, we were going to have to require, we were going to have to allow more than one ADU, so subsequent or second ADUs, but we could require, those would be requiring a special permit. The new guidelines now suggest it's up to the city or town to decide whether to allow more than one ADU. So that is one of the recommendations I'm going to make regarding subsequent or second ADUs. We've gone through the summary, the highlights, I don't know. People have specific questions, or you just want to get right into applications and exemptions. So these amendments would apply to new construction, new use and occupancy of existing buildings, unless exempt by city ordinance, express language of the amendment, state law, which exempts the subject of a building permit issued before the first publication of a notice of the public hearing, which was January 10, 2025, or the State Permit Extension Act. Effective date, the effective date is the date of the City Council's vote to ordain the amendments. Council must act on the amendments within 90 days after the public hearing closes, otherwise a newly, a new duly advertised public hearing must be held. So if the public hearing closes tonight, the final date for action is April 27, 2025. As we've heard, the state law goes into effect February 2, so the council is going to be moving to act before that. So these laws would be on the books before the state law goes into effect. Standard of review, the planning board's review and recommendations of the proposed zoning changes should be directed by substantive planning objectives, community need, and general welfare. I did want to comment, if I could. We did have some information prepared. This had been requested previously by some of the counselors. And again, this is just based on basic assessors' records, so these have not been vetted by building and occupancy records. So this is, again, just basically looking at the assessors' records in terms of properties that are used as a single family. So in the city, there are approximately, and again, these are very approximate numbers, but it's just used as a reference point, there are approximately 6,000 parcels that are assessed for use as a single family. There are approximately 4,000 for two families, approximately 700 for three families, four to eight, another couple hundred, and then more than eight, approximately 250 to 200. Again, these are very rough estimates. I will note they do not include condos. Condos are assessed differently, so if it's a two-family that's taxed as two condos, that's not included in that number that I gave. Same thing for the multi-units. And then I want to talk about mixed use, because this will apply, again, to commercial properties. So properties that are primarily residential with some commercial, and properties that are commercial primarily with some residential, and that brings into another couple hundred. These numbers, again, very rough approximates in terms of potential. We've been asked, I was asked at previous council meetings as well as about potential. Again, these are potential properties. You know, it's, it may seem more likely to some that a single family might petition to do an accessory dwelling unit, but noting the numbers and providing the info, because any lot that has a dwelling on it can petition for the ADU if it's in one of those five districts. So that's what we just want to be clear on. It's not just limited to single families. It's not limited to dwellings with accessory structures. An accessory structure can be added, or an existing structure could already be there. Same thing, we've talked about additions. And then finally, again, this is very, very rough number, again, strictly based on assessors. I did want to note, since there's some confusion as to whether we have any lots that are 7,500, and there are approximately 1,000, single-family lots that are greater than 7,500 square feet, and then the 5,000 to 7,500 range are another couple thousand. So again, those are making up the 6,000 that I referred to.
So can you just go back in a spirit, once again?
Approximately 1,000, greater than 7,500 square feet, single families, assessed as single families.
And what in there is your lower range?
The 5,000 to 7,500 was approximately 2,000.
And then below 5,000?
Below 5,000 was approximately 3,000. And that's coming up, again, these are very, very rough, that's coming, you know, totaling up to the 6,000 assessed as singles. So again, we're past the lot size, but I have been asked for it repeatedly, and I did want to just finally provide it, so, for everyone's reference. So, planning recommendation, again, you'll be making an advisory recommendation to the City Council. They can choose to follow it, follow it in part, disregard it, disregard it in part. So these would be recommendations that you make to the City Council. They will take them into consideration, or they will, they will review them at the very least. They could take them into consideration or not. And they will, you know, obviously move forward to take action on whether to adopt these amendments, as they have the body authorized to do that.
Okay. Can you read them?
Sure. So the recommendation which was prepared prior to the public hearings, that the Planning Board recommends that the City Council approve of the proposed amendments as submitted and with the following additional revisions. One, in Section 12, 12030, which is the Table of Use Regulations, to revise as follows. For accessory dwelling unit more than one, subsequent, second or subsequent, so the revision is to add the language "more than one" because that's the term the state uses. In addition to second or subsequent, change SP to no. So they would not be allowed by special permit, they would be prohibited. Two, Section 12.1610, which is the Table of Intensity Regulations, also known as the Table of Dimensional Controls, to delete all numbers and all columns and to add the following. MCC, Section 12.32.030.D5. We will, I did these in order of the sections, so we will get to that unless you want me to jump ahead to talk about that, Chair.
No, keep going.
Okay. Three is Section 12.32.030.D1. Purpose and intent, to revise the second sentence to read as follows. The intent of this ordinance is to protect the health, safety, and general welfare of the city's present and future inhabitants, and to address the potential impacts that the addition of an accessory dwelling unit to a property may have on the principal dwelling, surrounding neighborhood, and adjacent residences, including but not limited to impacts related to density, congestion, nuisance, and parking, and to comply with the Mass General Law's Chapter 48, Section 3, the so-called Affordable Homes Act. Some language has been added, some has been relocated in this paragraph. I didn't give you the strikeout showing what language was removed or added, but you can look at the paper, okay, and see what the original provision said, unless you want me to walk you through that. I had it written up with the strikeouts and was told by a colleague it was too confusing that way, so I didn't, I left it this, so this is how the provision would read. You'll recommend the provision read this way. So inherent in this is there's some language that's going to be moved around, added, things that are italicized and underlined are additional language, that's new language. But again, I'm not showing you exactly what was struck out. I'll go through it if you want me to.
Don't go.
Okay. So set, number four, Section 12.32.030.D2. Applicability, to revise the following provisions to read as follows. A, prior to the issuance of any building permit or certificate of occupancy for any accessory dwelling unit, a site plan review and site plan approval from the site plan review committee shall be required pursuant to this section. And B, the building commissioner or zoning enforcement officer shall determine whether a unit is an accessory dwelling unit. Five, Section 12.32.030.D3. Scope of review, to revise the provision, these should say proposed provision, revise the proposed provision as follows. Through site plan review, the city may review and impose terms and conditions on the appearance and layout of a proposed use or land or structures for an ADU prior to the issuance of a building permit, and may consider what reasonable requirements concerning dimensional standards such as dimensional setbacks, lock coverage, open space, bulk height, and number of stories of the structure, if any, should be imposed on the use. Six, Section 12.32.030.D4. General, so the first part of the amendment is to subsection 4F, to add the word "required" before "open space." And B, to add the following provision, subsection G, only one ADU shall be allowed on a single Seven, Section 12.32.030.D5. Design Standards, there are four parts to this. The first part is concerning subsection D5A, siting and location. To revise the proposed provision to read as follows. An accessory dwelling unit may be allowed only on a property that contains a principal dwelling. B, under subsection D5C, dimensional requirements, to revise the provision as follows. The requirements shall be those required for the principal dwelling or a single-family residential dwelling or accessory structure in the zoning district in which the ADU is located, whichever results in more permissive regulation. That is the subsection that is recommended replace, to replace the numbers in the columns of the Table of Intensity Regulations. That is what the current draft guidelines state. Those are the requirements we're supposed to use when we're evaluating the ADU. What's required, not what's existing, what's required. So we're going to look at the principal dwelling, or you're going to look at the single-family dwelling, and/or you're going to look at the accessory, and choose the most permissive Section 12.32.030.D5, subsection D, is to revise the following provision to read as follows. Again, these are proposed provisions, revised, proposed provisions. Any expansion of a building's footprint or in addition to an existing principal dwelling for an accessory dwelling unit shall comply with all dimensional controls. And those are the dimensional controls that we just referenced. D, subsection D5E, size, to revise the following proposed provision as follows. The maximum size of an accessory dwelling unit is 900 square feet of gross floor area or half the size of the gross floor area of the principal dwelling, whichever is smaller. Section 12, number eight, is Section 12.32.030.D6D. Parking requirements, to delete subsection D, which is definition of ushing in its entirety. Whether we have that definition or not, the state definition will control. The hope was that if that state definition changes, the entirety of the city will not be subject to that particular requirement that exempts all parking, all ADUs from parking. So if that, if that changed. Section, whereas if we have it on the books, even if the state law changes, it would apply. So that was the thinking behind that. Section nine, or recommendation nine, is section nine, Section 12.32.030.D7. Submission requirements, to delete the proposed section in its entirety and insert the following. All applications for site plan review shall be in writing and shall provide the information identified in Title IV of the Code of the City of Malden. Right now, the list of submission requirements is in the zoning. It's, will be difficult to change that or vary from that. So the idea was to put it in another section of the ordinance, such as Title IV, which can be more easily changed by the council. Another alternative is that it will be, just become a sort of form checklist that's held in the Inspection Services Department. The only concern I have with that is that that may change, then, depending on who is, you know... The only concern I have with that is that that may change, then depending on who is, you know, running that department. So, this way, if it's codified in another location, that the council would, would have jurisdiction over, we would be able to regulate that. And of course, Inspection Services, and I imagine, will make recommendations on what should be in that list, what should be required, et cetera. But at least that way, it will be codified for everyone's protection, applicants as well as the city. Section, recommendation 10 is Section 12.32.030.D10 regarding the decision. The recommendation is to delete 90 days and 90 day, and insert 14 days and 14 day. That's referencing the timeframe the committee, Site Plan Review Committee, has to post a decision after the hearing closes. So, moving it up from 90 days to 14 days. 11, recommendation number 11 is to make the following typographical corrections in the following sections. Under Section 12.32.030.D1, Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, there was a typo. Section 12.32.030.D9A, there was a typo in OSPCD. And then finally, in Section 12.32.030.D12, insert Mass General Laws, 48, Section 3, after the word "2" and before the word "regulations." That provision only referred to the state regu, guidelines, it didn't refer to the state law. So, we want to make sure the reference to the state law is in there as well. And then finally, recommendation 12 is Section 12.32.030.E, which is the special permit, special permit regulations for accessory dwelling units. The recommendation is to delete in its entirety. That, of course, goes along with the first recommendation. If you're deleting the option for special permit, then you would delete that whole section. If you don't, one, either one and 12 go hand, one and 12 go hand in hand, is the point. So if you choose not to move forward with section, recommendation one, I would recommend that you keep section 12. I'm sorry, you disregard the recommendation of 12. Either you're following both, or you're not following both. Sorry, I'm not being clear. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Michelle? Eric Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Michelle, I'd like to start, so what was the impetus for the recommendation, for recommendation one? If I'm understanding it correctly, that is to not allow more than one ADU?
That's correct.
And currently, the paper that the ordinance committee has sent to us is to allow multiple, second or, or change, maybe we're changing more than one ADU by special permit?
Yes, because the original guideline said we had to require it. So that's why it was put into the proposal. Now that we've learned it's not required, that we require, I would, I recommend that it not be in. I would, as, as a person on the working team, working on it, it's my understanding, the only reason we made that recommendation was because it was required, we understood it was required by the guidelines.
I'm just still understanding why we want to be more restrictive and not have the opportunity to, to, to have the potential to have more housing. Another question, Michelle, if you do put an ADU in a single-family unit, now that's one, if they're one of those single-family units, does it now become a multifamily unit?
It now becomes a two-family, and a two-family would become a three. So adding the ADU is adding another unit. An accessory dwelling unit is, is another unit, it just has a size restriction. So, for building code purposes.
One, one last question. So, what about pre-existing noncondition in the, in the, in the fact that if you already have a, a ADU in your, your, your single-family? Are you not allowed to build a detached ADU? Because that would be considered a second ADU?
ADUs aren't allowed in the city, so I don't know what, there is no use called ADU. Either it's a one-family or a two-family. There is no, the accessory dwelling unit is not defined in the zoning, and it's not defined in the building code. So, I'm not sure what, any unit, if somebody thinks they have a unit, they would need to come in and say, "I have an accessory dwelling unit" and would like to be permitted as accessory dwelling unit. There are none permitted in the city.
Them not being permitted and them not existing is two different things.
That is correct.
Okay.
People have, definitely have illegal units in the city, there's no doubt whatsoever.
I'll yield for now, thank you. Thank you, Ken Antonucci.
So, Michelle, just following up on what you just said. So, we have current zoning that, you know, and, and requirements for a two-family. And if you have a single-family and want to become a two-family, you could be disallowed because you don't meet those requirements. However, now with the addition of the ADU, you can actually make your single-family into not a single-family with an ADU, but you just said it would actually be considered a two-family.
For building code purposes.
For building.
And I'm not sure about tax purposes. But, if, under zoning, it will, right, a tax assessment, under zoning, it will now be called an ADU. So, a two, two, if a two-family is not allowed, a two-family is still not allowed. What is now allowed is a single-family with an accessory dwelling unit.
Right, so when the homeowner gets their tax bill, what's it going to call that?
I don't know, I don't have any information about taxes. Where, I believe the council is going to be talking to the assessor to figure that out. I don't know if it's going to be taxed as a separate unit, if it's just going to be taxed for the living space, or, I, I don't know if the state, I actually have even asked the assessor, and one of the counselors asked about taxation as well, Counselor Taylor. I actually even asked, will there be a new land use category? Will the state come up with a new category, so they can tax them? And the assessor told me he didn't know. So, I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you.
You all set, Ken? Counselor O'Malley or Counselor Taylor?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to clarify something. The city planner responding to Mr. Henry said that ADUs are not defined in the zoning and are therefore prohibited. I just wanted to clarify if that was true. And the only reason why I ask is that car washes were not defined by our, our zoning ordinances, but were not prohibited. No, my, my understanding is the absence from, of a definition does not equal a prohibition. I just wanted to clarify that.
Maybe I misspoke. It's not that it's not defined, there's no use category. They're not identified. So anything that's not identified or cannot be classified, thank you for making me clarify, that cannot be classified into an existing use category is considered prohibited. So, car wash is considered retail service right now.
Counselor, you all set? Eric McCush.
I think I have a sort of a devil's advocate kind of question. So, you're saying if someone added an ADU, now they're considered a two-family? But we want to restrict ADUs to one per building. But if now they're considered a two-family, what's their, what's to stop them from going forward and saying, "I want to add another ADU to make it a three-family"?
Okay, and I'm sorry, maybe I misspoke. So, for building code purposes, it's now a two-family. Under zoning, it's a single with an ADU. If it's permitted, you know, it gets the proper permits, it will have an occupancy permit that says accessory dwelling unit. So the city will recognize that it's, it's an accessory dwelling unit. So, if somebody comes in to do another one, they will, the city will see the records that show legal use and occupancy is for a single and an accessory dwelling unit, or a two and an accessory dwelling unit.
Okay, thank you.
It's more, when I say it's a two-family or three-family, it's for building code purposes, and it's more like for logistics, in the sense that there's another family living there potentially. There's a whole other unit living there. It's not a connected, you know, it's not part of the unit, it's a standalone unit.
No, that I understand.
Yeah, okay. That's why I was calling it that, yeah.
You all set, Eric?
I am, thank you.
Stephanie Stone.
Thank you. And recommendation four, the word detached is not there, so was that intentional? Or are you recommending or not recommending the detached proposal as delineating?
The, the detached, I'm not recommending, I'm recommending the original proposal, that all accessory dwelling units will be treated the same.
Okay.
Consistently going through the same review process and/or held to the same criterion standards. And, I mean, you're familiar with the city, the basis of that is every city street has different, you can't even generalize on one street, house to house to house. In one case, a garage unit may not have impacts, and then the property next door may have impacts. Same thing with adding an addition, or adding a whole other floor, or it could have an impact. So I, I, the, I, along with the working group, the mayor, did not think there was a way to properly distinguish, at this stage, what would have impacts. That they all should be given that review process, chance for public engagement. Keep in mind, it would also be the Site Plan Review Committee doing a review, as opposed to an individual doing the review. So, well, the ma, I won't repeat the mayor's, but he listed all the real, strong reasons why site transparency and public engagement, et cetera, group decision-making is preferred, again, for all the ADUs. Again, not knowing, it's going to be case by case what the impacts or what the proposal is.
And was there, was there anything in the state guidelines about treating detached differently?
The state guidelines say that we have to allow detached or attached. So we can't choose and say, "We only want to do detached, we want to only do attached." That state guidelines also provide site plan review, and it doesn't specify for one or the other. I know there was a comment made about one of the webinars, I also attended the webinars. Every webinar, there was different information presented. By different qualified people, attorneys, state people, on the same subject. So it was, you know, the, most, everybody in the internal working team attended the webinars, all the webinars, and they're all recorded, and so there was conflicting information. But again, some of them were, actually, both the web, two or three of them were before the guidelines came out. Originally, I think we were told there may not be guidelines. So, that's where that went.
And I just have another math question, so we're seeing a lot of multifamily units that are basically nonconforming, are in the single-family zoning. So if you have a multifamily that's in a single-family zoning district, you want to add an, I guess it really doesn't matter. You want to add an ADU that's detached, the ADU can only have one single-family, regardless of whether, whatever your primary unit is?
That's right.
Okay.
Well, I shouldn't say, it can only have one single-family, it, it can only be one dwelling unit. I do want to make one note of that, that was another addition to the guidelines. Mr. Pratt noted, you know, some of the other use and occupancy restrictions we can't have. So we can't have, we can't require affordability. We can't have restrictions based on age, income, familial relations, institutional. But the, the final one that's in the guidelines, I'm going to read just to make sure I get it correctly, actually states, in terms of what use, the guidelines have a lot of information on what we can't do, and this was one of the use and occupancy restrictions that we cannot have. So I just want to get that, so that, I'm reading this. So, it said, characteristics, relations between the occupants, income, age, familial relationship, enrollment in an education, educational institution, or that limits the number of occupants beyond what is required by applicable state code. So when you mentioned family, currently, our definition of family is four, four persons unrelated by blood, marriage, or adoption. That will not apply to the ADUs, because that's a restriction on number of occupants. So the ADUs will not be subject to that restriction. So, any number of unrelated individuals can live there, and, related or unrelated, I should say. Again, it's, you have to comply with sanitary code and building code, et cetera, but it's not the same.
Right, but the actual structure itself for the ADU has to be basically one apartment or one living space?
It has to be self-contained, right.
Self-contained, okay.
Right, the definition has to have, it says it has to have sanitation, cooking facilities, the separate access, there's a separate entrance, let me get to this. Maintains a separate entrance, there's a size restriction. The 900 square feet gross floor area. So, inclusive of sleep and cooking sanitary facilities. A self-contained housing unit.
Okay, so we can restrict an ADU from saying, having two apartments and a two separate entrance, two separate entrances in one building, when they build a separate building? We say no, that's just, you can only have one, one entrance?
I'm not sure if, if the location of the entrance might be something the site plan review could consider. I think it's, again, it's going to be very case-specific based on that property. Are they proposing in addition, are they proposing to use existing space? Are they proposing accessory structure, are they proposing to connect the accessory structure? You know, there's a lot of different variations we could see. Rebuild the accessory structure, add on to the accessory structure, you know, there's all, you can think of probably a lot of different variations as well. And as I mentioned before, this includes commercial properties as well. This board has seen some vacant storefronts that want to convert to a unit. A special permit previously required, now may be allowed by right, if it's, meets the requirements for the ADU. So that will change some of, some of the regs on the books, which is why, and I didn't even discuss this, but the provision in the original paper that speaks to that Section 12.28, just quickly get to that. And I had meant to write something on that. So, that provision that says, Section 12.28, will not apply to this. So that's the provision, that's the, the part of the ordinance that regulates pre-existing nonconforming uses. This board hears a lot of cases through that section of the ordinance, pre-existing nonconforming, come in for special permit. These are not going to be regulated under that, these will be regulated under ADU regs. So you won't see ADUs coming in through that pre-existing nonconforming special permit process. That was the reason for including that. Thank you.
You all set, Stephanie? Thank you. Diane Chuhar.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on Eric Henry's status there. A lot of single-family homes in the city of Malden have units that are finished in the lower level. And it's usually in the split-entry ranch, they'll have a lower level, they'll have a kitchen, bathroom. And the city, back in the day, would give them an affidavit saying as long as it wasn't used as a rental property. So my question is now, if an ADU is legal, can they change that to become now a rental unit? Or is that something, you know, that's, because they, they were, they, there are some houses that have, if you look up on the registry of deeds, they have an affidavit that says you can have an accessory unit in your, well, they didn't call it an accessory unit, they said you can have a, an additional living space with a kitchen and a bathroom, but you can't legally rent it, you have to have it as a family member, it was an in-law apartment. So I was just curious as how that would affect people. Because that was, that's, was probably on the books for, gosh, I want to say, until like 2020, I think, and then it changed where they wouldn't allow it. So, because we have a lot of houses in Edgeworth and Linden that always had those accessory units in the, you know, especially a kitchen in the lower level. But the city wasn't allowing it, so you had to take out the stove, things like that. So I'm just curious how that would, that might be something the city wants to think about, how, how you address that. Because you know those people are going to be coming back looking to say, "Hey, you know, what about me?"
Well, there were, I think you're referring to these restrictive covenants. There were at times restrictive covenants that were allowed to be put on a single-family, where it was said this would be used. Essentially, they referred to it sometimes as an in-law, so there couldn't be a lock on the door. It wasn't actually a separate unit, it was supposed to be a separate living space with a connection to the main house. Wasn't a separate unit, it wasn't, they, they all had restrictions, as you said, they can't be rented as a separate unit. They were not established or permitted as separate units. So that's something different. Any property can, that is in the correct district, can come in and petition to be at an ADU. You could say, "I'm starting from scratch, I have an empty floor, I want to make an ADU." Or you could come in and say, "I have what I think is a..." Or you could come in and say, I have what I think is a unit, I would like to petition to make that an ADU. So that would be the option for that. That's not the same as illegal units.
Oh, no.
Which, there's no grandfathering in, just because you added a unit in, or using it as a unit, doesn't make it automatically an ADU. However, you could come in and petition and say, I have a space already set up. The first thing they're going to ask you is, where are the permits for the kitchen, the plumbing, the electrical, et cetera? So, you know, work without permits isn't going to be given any type of, this is my understanding, and based on what the building commissioner told me in preparation for this meeting, there will be no passes, no grandfathering in for work without permits or illegal units. A work, a unit like that, that might have received permits is different. And I thought you were asking about something else, apparently. So, I don't know if that clarifies.
No, that helps me.
The size limitation is still there, so just because it was a 1,500 square foot area doesn't, wouldn't, that won't qualify for an ADU.
Yeah, they weren't that big.
Okay, so you're all set, Diane? Eric Henry, did you want to respond to Diane's comments, rather than wait for three other people to talk?
I'll yield.
Okay, Pat Hayes.
Thanks. Michelle, I had a question related to the Dover Amendment. I know, I know this is a protected use, and it sort of falls under the state's Dover Amendment, and we've had some excitement with a couple of discussions on recent meetings with regulations and what we can and can't do as it relates to those protected uses. So, you know, initiating a site plan review, what, what sort of teeth on the enforcement side of that does the city have? You know, knowing that it is a protected use, and I, I don't know that you can enforce it, because it's allowed by right, you know, under the state's statute, right?
Well, it is allowed by right under the state statute, but the state statute specifically states, and I'm reading from it, this is what the new law says, no zoning, zoning ordinance shall prohibit unreasonably strict or require a special permit or other discretionary zoning approval for the use of land or structures for a single accessory dwelling unit or rental thereof in a single-family residential zoning district, provided that the use of land or structures for such accessory dwelling unit under this paragraph may be subject to reasonable regulations, including but not limited to CMR site, if applicable, site plan review, regulations concerning dimensional setbacks in the bulk and height of structures, and then restrictions or provisions on short-term rental. So it's specifically in there, and it's also referenced in the guidelines. So it's my understanding, and as well, I've discussed this with the building commissioner and city solicitor, it's their understanding as well that we can require site plan review.
So, so refresh my memory, is there, what other uses in the zoning do we have a site plan review?
Okay, we have site plan review right now for uses that are not Dover protected uses. We use it as, as the mayor referenced, it's a lower threshold of review. So we have site plan review for the residential incentive overlay district, which is the multifamily zoning district, overlays in the central business zoning. We also have site plan review for the Royal Quarry redevelopment, reclamation redevelopment zoning district, which is obviously the Royal Quarry multifamily, and other commercial uses up there. We also have site plan review for the Malden River. That's the most recent one. And what was proposed, as Council Winslow mentioned, was a site plan review for educational, religious, and daycare uses, which is still, I believe the committee, ordinance committee and council is still working on that. That was, you had the hearing on that. So that, that of those other committees is the only one that's a do, quote, so-called Dover protected use. This will be a Dover protected use, potentially regulated by site plan review.
So where, where you have a situation where somebody has a single-family home, and they want to create an ADU, and they're not adding to the footprint, they're not adding the building, they're just renovating the interior. What's the site plan review going to determine there? Or, or earlier, Diane's example where there's a garage, it's a detached garage, it's already built, there's an apartment already above it, it just doesn't have, you know, kitchen, bathroom, but the structure is already there. What's the site plan review going to tell us about, or what are they going to, what type of oversight would they provide for that, those particular uses?
Well, I can't say, you know, specifically without knowing the exact particular property. I'd say every case, it's going to be case by case. But I would say specifically, things like open space are definitely going to be a concern and question, because now there is another unit that requires open space. So are you creating any open space, using any yard? If it's already a small enough yard, or limited what's there? I would say also things like typical site plan review features to do with, the councilor mentioned, enter, or actually Stephanie mentioned entrances, the council mentioned window placement, location, things like that. I would say trash storage is another issue, adding another unit. So they could possibly regulate some site-specific issues.
Right, but does the open space and density sort of go beyond the dimensional controls that, that the state statute allows us to do?
Well, I would say density doesn't, I didn't say density. Open space, yeah, open space definitely is listed. That's listed in there. I'm, I'm reading from now, I agree, dimensional setbacks may not change unless you need to add second means of egress. You might need to add a porch, if you're going up a story, or using an attic, I shouldn't say going up, because you said self-contained. Maybe you're using an attic, so you need now staircase coming down. Maybe it will determine which side of the lot the staircase goes on. It could determine things like screening, somebody mentioned, I think the councilor, no, clearly, it could, then that could get into effect with block coverage. It's going to be different based on each case. We can't necess, I can't necessarily say, if it's a basement, perhaps it's involving excavation of areas around it to create the light and ventilation that's going to be needed to have a dwelling unit in the basement.
That, that was actually another question.
You know, it could be all these different things. I think that's why the idea is, let's start off, site plan review, we will review them, this is a new law, this is new to the city, take a conservative approach so that every case is handled consistently and fairly. Because unfortunately, it won't be, some additions require it, some self-contained require it, others don't require it. We can't pick and choose which. So within the different categories, that's what the concern is, without knowing.
Got it. Two, two other questions, and then I'll, I'll yield, sorry, Chuck. We typically, right now, the city does not allow basement living units? Would that be open game for the ADU?
If, if a unit can comply with all the state building codes, health codes, fire code, right, typically, they're not allowed because they don't meet the building code standards. That's my limited understanding of it, again, based on information the building commissioner provided. Height, ceiling height, light, ventilation, location of like utilities, you know, the furnace and heating system and things like that. That's typically, it's, it's almost like self-restricting.
If they met all that stuff, though, then they could do in the basement.
Yeah, they'd have to bring the property or the, the area into code, regardless of where it was.
Okay.
And you have one more, Pat?
I did, now, I, I lost it.
Okay, well, there's a couple people who has.
Thank you, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Risa, or was it Risa O'Ronnie?
Me.
Okay, go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I wanted to go back to Stephanie's question, because I wasn't sure if it was really answered. I think you were asking if two separate units would be in one standalone building, if that was going to be considered one ADU, if there were two units in it, separated, with separate entrances? And I don't know if the size, the limitation on size would restrict that condition, but I think that's what you were asking, and I don't think it was answered.
Oh, okay, so, no, it's one, one A, one ADU unit is allowed.
Okay, not two in one building.
Right, it's not that it's one structure, it's one unit. One self-contained, a self-contained housing unit.
I didn't think it was, I didn't know that if it was answered that clearly.
Sorry, maybe I didn't understand that completely.
Thank you.
If I wasn't clear, thanks.
So you're all set?
I'm all set.
Ken, you don't have anything? Okay, Pat, did you have?
I, I did recall, did, was the committee defined, who makes up the site plan review committee?
Yes, that is in here. What was recommended was the city councilor, the director of the Office of Strategic Planning and Economic Development, or designee, and the Department of Public Health Director, designee. The thought process with the last, if people aren't familiar with the Board of Health, excuse me, Department of Public Health, they administer the rental unit inspections. And are familiar with that ordinance? So I think it's the sense that that may come into play with, with these, especially if they're being added to the, to the multi-units, or the two and three and above. Maybe not for the single, but they do rental unit inspections and just, obviously, they enforce the sanitary code, so that was the other piece. They'll be bringing that expertise to the process, compliance with sanitary code.
Sorry, I missed it, thank you.
Yeah, no, no, no problem.
Eric Henry.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair, I think this will be the last time. I just, a question, so, I'm, 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 I'm definitely not in favor of, of recommendation one, but because of the fact, I think that we are definitely capable, via the special permit, permitting process, to handle any multiple units that may come our way. But if this were not, if this were the case, and this were not allowed, would residents be allowed, they do have the right to, to seek variances and go, would they have the right to seek a variance of this, or is it just not going to happen?
If, if it's not allowed, they would not seek, be able to seek a variance, because that would be considered a use variance. So you would be saying that's a use that's not allowed. A second accessory dwelling unit or subsequent is not allowed. They would not be able to seek a variance of that.
Thanks for the clarification, Michelle. Okay, does anyone else have any questions for Michelle? Anyone from ordinance have any questions for Michelle? If there's no other questions from Michelle, people may want to start considering a, a motion. My only comments on this, I, I agree that I think the state's forcing this down on us again, just like they did with the MBTA. I know Council Linnahan explained what some of the differences were between the two. I still think this is going to be, it's significantly going to change the face of the city. And, and the support services, you sit there and you look at stuff, of the thing that I've heard most is that there's an elderly family member that's living in a house and can't afford it. So they're going to build an ADU and move into the ADU portion, and then they're going to rent out their house. So those people that say there were going to be no children associated with the ADUs, I don't think that's accurate. Because in that scenario, the person moves into the ADU and then rents it out to a family that has two or three kids that will be in our school system. Plus all the, the other services that need to be provided, be provided on Board of Health, inspectional service, the reporting that needs to be done on this to the state. You know, it, I, I really think that the impact is going to be more significant than folks are, folks are considering or acknowledging at the moment. Just my thoughts. Last Thursday, the state, the state took it out of our hands for the most part. Most of the things that had been considered as a way to sort of help manage this were taken away by the state. They took away the dimension controls, they took away the parking, they took away some of the other items that, we're just being forced to take this. And it's, I, I feel that it's being forced on us, and, but it's going to be the law come Sunday. And, you know, whatever I think, it's going to be the law come Sunday, and they believe, I, I read in something from the state, that they're expecting to get 10,000 units out of this.
Over the next five years statewide.
Over the next five years statewide. I think that's rubbish. I think in Malden alone, we could end up with a couple thousand units. Just, just conservatively looking at it, the numbers Michelle gave earlier, just looking at the singles and the twos, that's 10,000 properties, right, 10,000 structures. If 20% of them do it, right, that's going to be 2,000 units in Malden alone, just from that. Now, I don't know how many are going to do it, take advantage of it. There's going to be some people who don't have the, the financial means to develop an ADU, or don't have the experience or desire to do an ADU. But what worries me is the fact that we have so many landlords that live outside the city. And, and why wouldn't they, if they can get another $2,000 a month for putting an ADU in, why wouldn't they? If it's an investment property on these absentee landlords. So I, I just think it's going to be more significant than folks are acknowledging. But as I said, come Sunday, it's, it's the law of the land, so there's not a lot we can, we can do about it. Those are, those are my thoughts. Hopefully, that gave folks an opportunity to decide how they, what type of motion they want to do. Michelle did a nice job on the staff report, and I know she rushed around in the last day or so, trying to incorporate the late changes that were made by the state, so that we had something fresh and relevant to review and refer to the city council. Hopefully, it saved them a little bit of time in what they have to do. But that, yeah, so that's, that's what we have here. And unfortunately, I know I didn't attend it, but I heard that there was a four, four and a half hour meeting last Tuesday night, and I applaud everyone who attended it and worked through it, Council Winslow coming up with an alternative, Council O'Malley coming up with an alternative. But it's just unfortunate that the state stepped in and changed everything. Would have saved folks a lot of, lot of effort and angst. But with that said, Ken E. Tanucci, you have a question?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just, I just, just a clarification. I know, and I believe it was Council Linnahan that went over it earlier, the difference between the MBTA and the ADU mandates, call it. I mean, we had somewhat an illusion of a choice with the MBTA, but now this, we don't even have an illusion of choice. But you mentioned that there is no vehicle to challenge this, unlike, you know, there are different municipalities challenging, you know, even right now, the MBTA one. What is the actual difference, that, why can't this be challenged?
Well, I mean, I think that the challenge would be essentially passive. It would be either to pass something more onerous than what the guidelines are, have said that we can do, which we, you know, would, I think would be inadvisable and irresponsible because likely lead to litigation from homeowners. Or we do nothing, and the state law prevails, and there's no, there's no check or like certification essentially, as there was with 3A, where we had to adopt zoning as a council, and then send it to the state for review, and then they gave feedback, and then it was either adopted or finalized or not. There's no check back and forth and sign-off from the state. We just have the opportunity to add to what they've done in this state, the law, the change to the state law, so we can make these limited, you know, dimensional control changes, or add site plan review, or restrict to more than one ADU, you know, not, not let it go to special permit. We have limited tools that we can use to apply on top of what the state law says. Though we have limited tools that we can use to apply on top of what the state law says. But I think the key difference is, in, in my view, is that there isn't this checkpoint where you submit something and they certify it or, and tell you either keep working, do some more analysis, refine it, and then it becomes final. It just, it just happens. There's no, there's nothing to submit to them.
Yeah, I, I think, um, if you remember the MBTA process, I mean, one of the things, I mean, I, Council Spatafor and I sat in on that and from kind of day one, we could really end up specifying the specific plots in the city where that applied. And, and we, in some ways, Malden had a great advantage because our major part of complying with that was our already existing multifamily. So, so we could really direct it so it wasn't as burdensome. Here, you can see the dilemmas, the flip, the whole flip side is that it's very expansive where it can apply. I mean, I think the only thing, I mean, putting my administrative law hat on, our only choice as a city here would be to challenge the regulations and say not in compliance with what the intent of the law is. And that, that can be very challenging. It's, it's a hard burden to meet. You know, it's like the bus stop versus, you know, that seems a very, maybe there's a challenge there that might be. I, I think it's sort of, uh, you know, a, a bus station, to say a bus stop is a bus station. I actually filed, you know, comments and the mayor filed comments about saying, we don't think that that's really consistent. You know, that, and, but they did not accept that. It seemed that, you know, I worked in Gloucester where they had the bus service where you flagged it down. So they seem to listen to the Gloucesters of the world where they didn't have bus stops. But, but in Malden, they, they treated us differently because we actually have a sign that says this is where you pick up the bus. So, um, so I mean, I think there might be some flaws in, in the regulations we could object to. But, um, you know, to the extent that, uh, you know, that, that's just a, a different challenge. That's the only way we could, we could go forward if, if short of trying to, you know, apply something. So we could object to the regulations.
Yeah, so basically.
That's a different process. I, I don't know if we could kind of burn it, get, get some regulations in place, but also object to the state. I mean, we could do both things, but we could talk about that with legal tomorrow.
So the only choice we have here is really just, we're trying to minimize the negative impacts of what's being essentially forced on our throats.
So, but that, like I say, the only, I think the only choice we have related to the state is to try to say that their interpretation put, put forth in their regulations is not consistent with the intent of the law. And, you know, I think there's some, like, the bus station thing is probably something that, you know, I think they could make some reasonable arguments about, but other things, it would be difficult. I mean, the intent here is to say communities have to try to, you know, make every effort to allow these. I mean, that's the, the type of thing without, unless we have good, strong, you know, re- reasonable regulations. So, so that's, so I think that we have to do as reasonably what we can and we can decide to the city whether we, something like on the parking, that we would wanna fight that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Ken. Did you, did that answer your question?
That answered, that clarified my question. I mean, and, uh.
Okay, thank you. Oh, hold on a second. I think Council O'Malley or Council Taylor, did I see your light on?
Yeah, I, I was gonna pass, but to Mr. Ettenucci's question, I think that probably what you would end up seeing is if we don't pass this ordinance tonight, or if you don't recommend it and we don't pass it by the second, on Monday, people who have already made these plans drawn up for ADUs based on the state regulations will file their building permits and request to have their ADUs approved, knowing that we have no restrictions at all on ADUs. And so it would be a little bit, to be honest with you, we're probably not gonna be in, in much a different situation if we pass it or didn't pass it because the state regulations are so substantial. But there is some of this vetting that is possible. So, yeah, it does behoove us to pass something. Otherwise, people can do it anywhere.
Thank you, Councilor. Ken Ettenucci. Well, we're gonna have to reopen the public hearing? Is that? I know, but.
I guess, so we could, the planning board doesn't have to, but since he, this is the council, the Rules and Ordinance Committee can recognize him as a, uh, a councilor, um, you know, off committee. So that, that's typically what we do. So, so, so we, we're just recognizing a councilor off committee.
Okay. Counselor, if you come up to the thing? I've not heard of that before, Counselor.
But we, often in our committee meetings, we always recognize off committee councilors. So if I'm recognized, you, you don't have to recognize us.
Thank, thank you, thank you, Councilor Winslow. I'll just keep this very brief. I just wanted to name that the council is also very concerned about the impacts on the rental stock in Malden and especially negligent or out of town landlords who are not paying attention to their properties. And I heard you mention that, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to let you know that we're in some active conversation. I've had conversations with Councilor Taylor. Councilor Seminelli has been very concerned about this. So I think we will be looking at other ways to also address that problem, recognizing that, um, there are ways that it could be exacerbated by the ADU ordinance that were, you know, that is moving forward. But it's a separate conversation. Just wanna let you know that that is part of our conversation.
No, that's definitely encouraging because there's a potential with so many to be a problem. But thank you, Counselor. Okay, thank you. That's encouraging. Thanks for sharing that. Counselor, Counselor, Counselor at Large McDonald. Counselor Winslow, do you have any other business you'd like to conduct for the council? Well, well, we, we, did you not wanna wait till our vote or hear what we're doing or? Okay. Ken Ettenucci.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chair, um, prior to making a motion, I would like to thank Michelle and the group and the counselors and everyone involved that has put a lot of work in and recognize the amount of work they've put into putting together the best, um, recommendation in a bad situation. I will motion to recommend, um, make the recommendation to council the, uh, items listed in the planning recommendation. All 12 of the recommendations to recommend, recommend approval with those 12.
Additional.
To, to council.
Okay, so Ken's made a motion to, to, to pass, make a recommendation to city council that we, uh, that they adopt city council paper 13 dash 2025 with the 12 proposed changes that are in the staff report. Is there a second for Ken's proposed, uh, motion? Diane Chuha.
I'll second.
Diane has seconded. Okay, let's see. So Ken and Diane have seconded. Okay, Michelle, and as a reminder, Michelle, Ronnie is the one voting on this petition, on this public hearing?
Ken Ettenucci?
Yes.
Diane Chuha?
Yes.
Tawadech Gavrisolasi?
Yes.
Risa Gray?
Yes.
Patrick Hayes?
Yes.
Eric Henry?
Abstain.
Do, do, does he, you required to state the reason?
I don't fully agree with the motion.
Okay, mark it down.
Okay.
If she didn't agree with it, I would, thought I might have voted against it, but, okay.
That's my vote.
Okay. Eric McCush?
No.
Ronnie Rajvarma?
Yes.
Chaka Open?
No.
Two. Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I have this written down because we looked it up last time. Abstain, not voting, state reason. It wasn't recusal, right?
It wasn't a recusal.
Recusal is nonparticipation, total nonparticipation due to conflict. And it wasn't not voting, which was Stephanie who just didn't vote.
Right, cuz she wasn't, right.
Okay, so six to two, we will make the recommendation to the city council. I will do that first thing there, wherever, but I will send that to the city clerk first thing in the morning because there was a meeting, as they, as the council said, scheduled for tomorrow night. Ordinance committee and then full council.
Terrific.
I will go to answer any questions about your recommendation.
Okay, now I will turn it back to Council Winslow.
All right, so, on Council O'Malley's motion to adjourn, seconded by Council Linnahan, all of us in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the Rules and Ordinance Committee is hereby adjourned. Thank you very much for everything.
Thank you guys very much for hanging in there for almost three hours. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you for going past the three hours. Thank you all of you for your service. Thank you, so great.
Thank you, guys. Okay, so, um, have a good evening and good luck tomorrow night. It'll be interesting watching, I'll be watching that on television. Okay, so next item, and just for the record, um, just for the record, Stephanie Stone will be voting on 76 Granville Ave and Zero State Highway. Okay.
Okay, sorry, I'm sorry about that. So the first item is 76 Granville Ave. This is an approval not required subdivision. It's to merge two lots. This board may recall that there was a combined development site for 76 Granville and No Number Granville Place merged together to reconstruct an existing four-family. So this is a subdivision merger plan. So you, I would recommend that you endorse it or that you authorize, I would recommend that you approve it and that you authorize the chair to endorse it. Oh, and apparently, we have somebody here to talk about it. Okay.
Yeah, 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 hold on a second, um, um.
This.
You typically wouldn't be making a presentation.
Oh, that's fine. I don't need to if you don't want me to.
Yeah, and I didn't, um, I didn't, I don't think I asked you to make it. It's just done in the, a course of a public meeting. They have to act on it and review it publicly. But while the petitioners, representatives here, if anybody had any questions, there's the plan and there's the engineer, so.
Yeah.
But, yeah, there's no presentation, there's no hearing or anything.
Yeah, and, and basically, it's approval not required as long as you have the frontage and then we have to approve it.
Okay, all right.
You know, as long as, everything hangs in.
I want a presentation, so.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I know, we communicated by email, but I, I, I don't think I told you to come, did I?
Tell me I didn't tell you to come. I don't think I did.
No, I guess that was my bad assumption that you wanted someone here.
Well, thank you and hopefully this is billable.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
And thank you for hanging in there tonight.
Okay, what, what, what?
Yeah, if you wanna hang on a second, we're gonna vote in a second.
Yeah, but then we'll, we'll, I'll let you know when it's ready to be picked up, which will be sometime tomorrow.
You'll let me know.
I will email you and say it's ready to be picked up. We have to scan it in and get everything set, okay?
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion on the approval not required? Eric McCush. Eric's made a motion to approve. Eric Henry.
Like, second that motion?
Eric, Eric Henry has seconded it. All of us in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Zero, okay. So all in favor, thank you. Thank you very much.
Shots fired.
And Stephanie was running Ronnie.
Stephanie is voting, Ronnie was not voting.
I heard about, uh, some accessory dwelling units in Malden.
Get some expertise.
I don't wanna say it, but that, you may see one there.
Okay, yeah.
We didn't really get into that, but you had granted a special permit for that poor family, but.
Could now be a five.
Now could be a five, yeah.
At least a five, yeah. Uh, okay, next item, Zero State Highway. I'll let Michelle explain it.
Okay, you all have a copy of that plan. This is a plan that the board approved back in October. It was not ready for endorsement until recently. There were certain conditions the board put on, as you may recall, in your decision. If you don't recall them, they're listed on the front of the plan. I realize it's a very small copy, but that's what's in that right-hand corner, all the conditions that you put on your approval to do that plan. We were asked, um, a, a special request was made, um, in the interest of the permitting process so that this would be in order for the site plan review meeting that was held last week if the chair would be able to endorse the plan in advance of this meeting. So he did do that. He did, that, that is occasionally done. He did, was taking no other action than endorsing it. You've already approved the plan. You've set the conditions. Nelson and I, or at least I made sure, I should say, um, as well as, you know, checked with city engineer and other people involved, that all the conditions were in order before the endorsement. They were. The chair endorsed it. So this is just before you two ratifying, confirm, confirm the endorsement.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the endorsement, uh, the approval of the endorsement? Do you, do you want this roll call?
Just to ratify and confirm your action, right?
Okay. Ken Ettenucci.
I'll make a motion to ratify and approve.
Eric McCush. Second that motion?
Okay, and I didn't even, it's on the agenda, but this is the Overlook Ridge, Zero State Highway, defended a plan, a subdivision approved October 23rd, 2024. So Ken, who, you, who made the motion?
Ken.
And you seconded it, Eric?
Eric seconded.
You can do whatever you wanna do for the vote.
Go ahead, Ken.
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Tawadech?
Yes.
Risa?
Yes.
Patrick Hayes?
Yes.
Eric Henry?
Yes.
Eric McCush?
Yes.
Stephanie Stone?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Chaka Open.
Chaka Open, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ronnie, Ronnie, do you wanna give a quick update on, um, Community Preservation Committee?
Yep, I'll give us, uh, quick Cliff Notes. It's been a long night. So, uh, main things that we covered during the last CPC meeting was, um, some money that was previously allocated for the Roosevelt Field project, um, where that project is no longer happening, um, in the immediate future. That those funds have been reallocated to two different projects, Malden River Works, and, uh, some funding went to Diver Park. So they split that money up between the two projects while that project is, uh, being reevaluated. It's not in, uh, the short term in terms of happening. Some other projects that are being funded separately, St. Paul's Church requested some funding, Forestdale Cemetery, some funding for the, the rock wall out there. Some money's being allocated over there. And that's about it for projects that are being funded right now. So it was my first meeting, so I'll have more details as I'm progressing through the CPC. But if anyone has any questions.
No, thank you very much, Ronnie. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Michelle, Master Plan activities and open space and recreation plan?
Memo that should be attached to the agenda. Somebody can find it. It's dated January 7th, 2025. It includes an update on the open space and recreation plan and also an update on the comprehensive plan formerly known as master plan. the comprehensive plan formerly known as master plan. So you can read that, take that home, your reference.
Okay, if there's nothing else, the next meeting is going to be on February 12th, Abraham Lincoln's birthday. So February 12th, which is only a few weeks away.
Two weeks.
So two weeks away. From Wednesday. If you can't make it, please let Michelle know right away. Otherwise, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Diane Chuha, motion to adjourn. And let's see, who do I see? Do I see Eric Henry? Second? Good, Eric Henry, second. And nine fifty-two, yes. Well, thank you very much, everyone. It was a confusing, complicated night with the fact of the late changes and, and the short runway on having to deal with all this stuff. So I appreciate everyone asking great questions, great discussion, and thanks for hanging in there. Have a good evening.